Good evening and welcome to the May 24th meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Najarian. Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Devine.
Here, next item, please.
Flag salute.
Led by Councilmember Friedman.
I invite you to rise and join me in renewing our pledge to the nation's flag.
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Robert Wallace, interim pastor, First Baptist Church.
Let us pray together. Our God, aware of the fragileness of democracy and the necessity of being diligent in its exercise, we come both to thank you for the long and cherished history of representative government and ask your blessing upon our city and upon these elected representatives as they undertake their tasks this evening. May our city continue to be a place of justice, common sharing, and the honoring of all persons. For its cherished past, we give thanks; for its future, we seek your guidance, O God. Amen.
And may we have the next item?
The agenda for the May 24th, 2016 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was postponed Friday, May 20th, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Next item at 3:00 a.m. under presentation and appointments is the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, May 31st, 2016.
Thank you, Ms. Spears.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, for the May 31st, 2016 regular Housing Authority and City Council meetings, they have all been canceled. Our next regular meeting will be, meetings will be scheduled for June 7th, 2016. So next week's meetings will be canceled and our next regularly scheduled meetings will be for June 7th.
Thank you, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is the consent items, including minutes following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion, any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Okay.
Yes.
I think we have one, Mr., Councilmember Garpetian?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull items four, D, and E.
D and E, okay. May we have the rest of the items? Anyone else want to pull one? Can we have the rest of the items read into the?
All of the items, or would you just simply like a motion?
All except for those two, a motion, yes.
Yes.
For a motion.
And I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, we ask that we withdraw item F from the agenda. It looks as though we will not need item F.
Okay.
And just take it off calendar.
You? So, do I have a motion for read, for the rest of the consent items?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. And item D, would you read into the record, please?
Item D is Director of Public Works and Community Development regarding dedication of the city property at 227 North Brand Boulevard as a paseo. D1 is Resolution dedicating certain city properties for public paseo purposes. And E is a Director of Public Works and Community Development regarding dedication of city property at 222 South Brand Boulevard as a paseo. And E1 is a Resolution dedicating certain city properties for public paseo purposes.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I received a couple of calls and people are asking what happens with these pases and what is the process? I just want to, so if you would do us a favor and explain to us, is this a city-owned land at this time that we're turning into a more public use for, as a paseo, so the public can use it? And what happens after the title is changed from city-owned property into a paseo? What happens to that property?
Yes, sir. The previous definition had just been as public right-of-way, and so when the council, I forget when, it was several years ago, came back and created the definition of paseo, we just needed, that was for the purpose of being able to call something really by its right name. And so when you look at the paseo, which previously had just been dubbed public right-of-way, that goes from Brand to Central Park as it moves past Mona and what is now Chess Park, the idea of allowing those rights-of-way to be programmed and to have activities and to do all kinds of other types of things, public and private, because we could lease it out for performers or for any kind of fundraiser or private event for a nonprofit that might be doing some kind of activity that you wouldn't necessarily do on a public right-of-way, but you would allow on a paseo. And so it's basically the existing Mona paseo, calling it, designating it as a paseo, the existing Chess Park paseo, or designating it as a, as a paseo.
So this will give us the opportunity to have more programs?
Absolutely, gives us more flexibility.
Thank, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Said for both of those?
Yes.
All righty.
I move the both items for D and E.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda is Council and staff comments.
Councilmember Friedman, no. Councilmember Sinanian. Garpetian.
Well, we just came back from the ICAC, the International Council of Shopping Center Commission, and there's so much to talk about, but we are not ready, we just, because we just arrived about two, three hours ago. So we will bring a report back on the, on the 7th.
Okay, thank you. I have one comment, one request. I received an email about a welcome sign for the Glendale Equestrian neighborhood, and I would like to have staff look into that. It seems that there are blurred lines there in that area of our city with L.A., Burbank, and Glendale, and no one kind of knows where one ends and where the other begins. And so I'd like to see our, if we can identify that Glendale neighborhood and make it more unified with our city. Do I have a?
I'll second it. I would say that the Burbank Rancho has an equestrian sign. They also have equestrian streetscape. We should make sure that ours kind of jibes with theirs, because I just think it would be unattractive to have something radically different on each end of that area. So you may want to just take a look or reach out and have a, you know, talk to the neighbors as well. The other thing about the welcome signs on the Burbank Rancho is that they also serve as a traffic buffer from the equestrian pathway in the street. So it serves a dual purpose to help protect, alert drivers to the presence of the horses and where they're going to be. So I would suggest we do the same thing.
Do I need?
That's all I need.
Okay, great. All right. Next item, please, thank you.
Next item is the community event announcements, three-minute portion, as well as a three-minute general public comment portion for those individuals who wish to forego their five-minute comment period for three minutes.
Okay, I have several parts, so I'll call on Roberta Medford first and Gail Egan after
Hi, I'm Roberta Medford, and I hope it's okay that Matt's here with me. I wasn't exactly sure if he was going to be here, so I didn't put his name on the card. I'm representing Glendale Beautiful, and as you see on the screen, we want people to know about our final program of the year, the June luncheon. It will be held on Tuesday, June 14th, postponed from our usual day because that's election day. It's at the Casa Adobe this time, which is something different for us, which is at 1330 Dorothy Drive in Glendale. And as you know, we, in cooperation with the city, specifically community services and parks, provide the docents and the, and programming in the Casa Adobe. So, and Matt's going to let you know a little bit about the program. The event begins at 11:30 in the AM with socializing and appetizers, and then a bountiful picnic lunch featuring diners, fried chicken, and lots of side dishes, and, at noon. And then the program will start at 12:30. The price of the lunch is $18, and you pay there, but we do need you to RSVP, obviously, for our count. And the RSVPs go to Sharon Wiseman, and she is at Sharon@JetCafe.org. And her phone number is 818-248-4967. And anyone here in attendance, I have copies for the council, but if anyone here in the audience would like a copy of the leaflet, please flag me down as I leave, and I'll give you one. And Matt Ganji, the program person and soon incoming president next year of Glendale Beautiful, is going to tell you about the program.
So we have Michael Crosby, who's going to be speaking at the Casa Adobe, and he's going to be doing a program specifically on Adobes. And it's entitled "How Glendale Saved California and Changed the Nation," so it should be pretty interesting. Michael Crosby is a docent, and he's a past president of the Los Encinos Docent Association in Encino. He's also a librarian for the San Fernando Valley Historical Society, and he's the author of "Encino Images of America" from Arcadia Books. So it should be an interesting program about Adobe structures in general, so I hope you can make it to the Casa Adobe.
And be sure to RSVP to Sharon Wiseman at, at the information on the, on the screen. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Gail, can you just let me take one person ahead of you? I'm sorry. Don Biggs, please, and then Gail.
Mayor Devine, members of council, distinguished guests, staff. My name is Don Biggs, and I'm the chairman of this, the city's Memorial Day program each year. I wanted to invite you all and the, the members of the city to the program next Monday morning at 9:30. The keynote speaker will be our most illustrious police chief, Rob Castro. We will be featuring a couple of things, one being the ceremony commemorating the loss of, of Joseph Stifter, who died in Afghanistan in January, and we'll be adding his name to the walls outside on the monument for the War on Terror. That actually happens tomorrow. And we're also commemorating the 20th anniversary of the monuments. This is our 20th year doing a program here out Isabel and Broadway. And, well, I have, I guess I have three minutes, I didn't want to take it, but a few other things going on that day, because some people like to sleep in. Forest Lawn also has a program at 1 o'clock in the afternoon down at Forest Lawn, Glendale. In the morning, if you like to get up early, the Verdugo, I'm sorry, the Vietnam Veterans Monument at Ocean View in Honolulu has, has a program at 8 o'clock, as well as the Two Strike Park has a program at 8 o'clock up the top of the hill. They're not in the county, but they're sponsored by the post up there, and they are in the, in the city. Burbank also has a program at 11 o'clock. So it's a very busy day, a very commemorative day for Memorial Day, remembering those who gave their lives for our country. 3 o'clock in the afternoon is the, is considered a moment of silence in, in memory of that day, so we ask that everyone take a pause, take a moment, and think about the ones that gave their lives for our country and our freedom. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Well, with that many choices, I hope that everyone will try to make it to one of those memorials.
We get a lot of people each year, and we, we always have room for more.
Thank you very much. Gail Egan, followed by Sean Bressel.
Thank you, councilmembers. I'm an inexperienced speaker, and I'm a rather new resident of Glendale, and last night I attended a meeting that was a homeowners and citizens meeting to oppose the negative determination impact of the design review board. And in that fact-finding process, I learned that to file an appeal of that determination, it requires a fee of $2,000 per appellant. And I believe that is somewhat violative of the government code, as fees are supposed to represent the cost, specific costs related to the service being provided. And a $2,000 fee, if every homeowner and citizen were to file their own independent appeal, that $2,000 would be duplicative as, as well as unconscionable. If staff within DRB is well-paid, I would think they're even making $50 to $75 an hour in their salary. So I don't quite understand why any fee for an appeal would be charged. Further, the court system has a fee waiver process, and I tried to find out if the city clerk will accept an appeal on a fee waiver, and I could not find the process of requesting a fee waiver. And I believe that the council then could direct the city clerk to accept the appeal that is forthcoming by close of business either Thursday or Friday without fee. Right now, we're currently trying to raise the money for $2,000, but I believe that's, one, it's unconscionable, it doesn't represent the cost for reconsideration, and it's probably violative of the government code.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ochoa, are we violating a code?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Sean Bressel, followed by Albert Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor Devine and members of council. I'm Sean Bressel with the Glendale Historical Society, and I just wanted to make you aware of our upcoming gala and benefit on June the 11th. It's called Come Fly With Us, and it's going to be at the Grand Central Air Terminal, which has recently been rehabilitated by Disney. It's on the Disney campus between Sonoma and Grandview and Airway and Grand Central Avenue. A lot of people don't know about Grand Central Air Terminal, but it was the first commercial airport for Los Angeles, and transcontinental service from Los Angeles to New York was inaugurated out of that airport in 1929, and Charles Lindbergh was at the controls of the first, first flight. It was, it was, it fell into disrepair. It was beautiful, it's a beautiful 1928 building. It's a zigzag modern meets Spanish revival, if you can, if you can kind of envision that. And so it fell into disrepair. Disney purchased it a number of years ago and has done a beautiful rehabilitation and adaptive reuse. I know all, all members of council were there at the, at the ribbon cutting in December, I believe. So we're going to have our gala and benefit there on June the 11th in the evening. People who attend the gala are going to be able to see the, the waiting room terminal and, and go upstairs and see a little bit of the interior, which has been converted into, into office space. We also will be giving out our preservation awards that evening, and one of the recipients will be Disney for their rehabilitation of that property. And the other recipient will be the Neo Drera Drive Historic District, which you just designated a few weeks ago. We're also going to have a live band hors d'oeuvres, classic libations, and asylum auctions. So people who are interested in tickets to this event on June 11th can go to our website, which is glendalehistorical.org, and purchase tickets. They are 144 members and 194 non-members. Thank you.
Thank you. There's an extraordinary restoration, extraordinary.
Good evening, councilmembers, staff, and residents, and especially the Rossmoyn residents who are getting shafted by this hotel that you people have allowed to be put in up on North Brand. It is just no place for a hotel. Don't you, people on the council have any vision of what that means to have a hotel up there? I, I don't think you have vision for anything of all these things you're approving in Glendale. This city, I've had friends, my wife, this past week, they had their Hoover High 60th reunion. People came in from Glendale, haven't been here, they said, "What is going on? What did they do to Central Avenue?" It's bizarre. It's really bizarre. The traffic is unbelievable. They want us to come down and use the restaurants here. You come down here, you can't even get through. It takes me a half an hour to get from Colorado up to the freeway during the day, and the 4,000 units aren't even occupied yet. It's going to be a zoo. And I can't believe you councilpeople don't have that vision. Now, this hotel thing, what amazed me was Mayor Devine, a couple of weeks ago, proposed to put some kind of height change to the whole area so no more happens. We got to do that, because there's nothing stopping the developers. You don't stop them. You don't listen to the residents. You don't care about the residents. You only respond to the developers. Yeah, it's legally okay, but morally, it's not. It's a disaster up there, and you should be concerned about that. And when she raised that question, Councilman Najarian put her down for asking that she was exceeding her authority to, to bring this up, meaning that, oh, you're doing this because of that hotel. Well, it was for the future, no more. But what happened is Mr. Najarian, a candidate, has his campaign headquarters in that facility where they want to build a hotel. If that isn't corruption, I don't know what. And, and he also owns property up in, in Brand Boulevard up there somewhere. This has been in the past. You know, I've been through a lot of things in this city. We went through Hillside Orange, we did all these things. We had to fight and fight and fight to get properties, and yes, people couldn't build. They had the right to build, but we stopped them. And that's what needs to be done now, and we rely on the council. We elect you to do that, protect us. You're not doing it. It has to be done. And these people in Rossmoyn, when she brought up the fact, $2,000 to appeal at our meeting last night, it was sad to see them scrambling around trying to sign up. How much can we give to, to pay for this appeal? This is totally, totally not Glendale, and I hope you all take it to heart and do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's my last card. Next item, please.
Madam Mayor, I just want to make an announcement on behalf of the Glendale Public Library. They were unable to send someone to make the announcement this evening, but Nina Revore, the 2016 One Book One Glendale author, will be in Glendale to talk about her book on May 25th, tomorrow, Wednesday, 7:00 PM at the Adult Recreation Center next to the library. This is to speak about the One Book One Glendale book that hopefully everyone has been reading, Read the Age of Dreaming. So this is an event with the author of the book, which will be held tomorrow, Wednesday, May 25th, 7:00 PM at the Adult Recreation Center, right next to the central library. It's going to prove to be a very interesting evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And next item?
Next item on the agenda, and your item 8A is the Director of Public Works regarding Proposition 84 Green Streets Demonstration Project. At 8A1 is a Resolution rejecting all the bids, dispensing with competitive bidding, authorizing the Director of Public Works to negotiate, and the city manager to execute a construction contract in amount not to exceed $2,250,000 and approve a 10% reserve contingency in amount not to exceed $225,000 directly with the bidders for the Proposition 84 Green Streets Demonstration Project, specification number 3570. 8A2 is a Resolution of appropriation to transfer or appropriate funds for the propositions 84 Green Streets Demonstration Project.
Thank you. Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, ma'am. At long last, we have what hopefully will be the award of contract for this project that's been a long time coming. The city has been the recipient of $890,000 Green Streets Demonstration Project grant, which we intend to make full use of. You'll recall that almost two years ago, I guess, it's been where we had, we, once we got the award, we had a tremendous amount of outreach, we had on-sites events there on Harvard, at Maryland, where folks could walk around and see what types of green technology we could invest into and implant into the infrastructure to make what is known as a green street. As Mr. Galani will tell you in a second, however, once we put the bid on the street, ran into a little bit of difficulty by way of the bid submissions, and so what we are going to be asking you tonight is for your permission to dispense with competitive bid, take the three bidders, and negotiate with them directly. And hopefully we'll be able to return with a contract that meets the specific goals that we have for green streets. So with that, Rubik, you want to talk about the project?
Thank you, Ms. Ochoa. Madam Mayor, members of council, this project, as you can see on the slide, is located on Harvard Street between Brand Boulevard and Glendale Avenue, as well as Louis Street between Colorado Street and Wilson Avenue, adjacent to the central library, Adult Recreation Center, and several churches and senior housing complexes. The scope of work includes 37 bio-retention facilities or bioswells of varying sizes up and down the project, three mid-block pedestrian crossings on Louis Street, sharrows on Louis Street between Colorado and Wilson, as well as the planting of low-water usage plants and trees, and curb ramps meeting ADA guidelines and requirements, as well as some traffic signal upgrades and striping. As Mr. Ochoa mentioned, we opened the bids, we have bids from three reputable contractors who have done work for the city in the past, but unfortunately, all three missed certain requirements in our bid package that deemed them non-responsive, and we are requesting authorization to negotiate with one or all three for an amount lower than the engineer's estimate. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, ma'am.
Any discussion?
So how would you, how would you determine whether you want to negotiate with one or more?
Councilmember Sinanian, we start with the lowest bidder, albeit non-responsive, and we'll take it from there, see how the negotiations, negotiations proceed. If we reach to a reasonable, agreeable amount, then we'll stop it there. If not, then we can go to the second and third bidders and compare their prices.
And what was the nature of their nonresponsiveness?
Some of them were missing, for example, notarization of the bid documents, some were missing signatures, some were missing the request to provide the projects of similar magnitude and size in the past five years that they have worked on, some were missing the percentage of the work that will be subcontracted to their subs. So mathematical errors were not in there, but silly clerical, just rushing through the bid documents and not submitting everything that was requested. But nevertheless, makes them, yeah, non-responsive. But in the future, we are working on making it simpler in the form of a table, so it won't be question after question, so they can check the boxes that applies to them, and they can provide the documentation that way. So we shouldn't see these kinds of issues in the future, hopefully.
Councilmember Friedman?
I know the item is about the bid, but I just wanted to ask a few questions about the project, because it's been a little while since we've seen it. What are the trees that are being removed?
There are about 20 trees, I believe, that will be in conflict with the bio-retention facilities and/or ADA curb ramps that will happen.
So which, what kind of trees are they?
I don't have that information.
But I just want to be sure that we notify the residents, because people in Glendale love their trees, and every time trees are removed, we get a lot of very angry letters. Are we going to be replacing trees?
Yes, absolutely. We will be planting over 100 trees along the project.
So we need to be sure we let people know and so that they understand what's happening.
Absolutely.
Hopefully, we've done that outreach.
Yes.
And I just want to say again that I hope, I know that this is a demonstration project, but I think that having green streets is very important as a goal and a philosophy. So I hope that as we do this, we adopt all the best practices and not wait for grants to make these happen, but that every time we upgrade our streets, we incorporate these sorts of features, the bioswells, the native plants. Are we doing water-permeable paving?
Not with this project because of the challenges that we have with the utilities within the, under the pavement.
We're doing the bioswells, so are you draining the water into the bioswells?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay, so that's.
37 of them, Councilmember Friedman.
That's just as good. So hopefully, we, you know, like I said, bioswells become just routine as we can do them, and, and all of the other water-saving features that this will demonstrate. Okay?
Great, thank you. Councilmember Garpetian?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. So the cost of this project is $2,250,000, 2.250? Is it estimated cost?
Councilmember Garpetian, that is the goal, to be negotiated with the contractors.
And we have $890 million, $890,000 in grant?
Yes, Councilmember Garpetian.
Where, where does the rest of the money come from?
The rest of the funds will come from our annual street reconstruction program, our annual gutter reconstruction program, and savings that we have had in previous projects that we have closed out.
Okay. And the trees that we're going to replace, because these are mature trees that we're taking out, what kind of trees are we replacing them with?
The standard for us is 15-gallon-sized trees, because those are the best sizes that will grow properly into the urban forest environment.
And how many trees are?
And how many trees are we removing, again?
I believe approximately 20. Exactly 20.
Twenty? And can you explain to me one more time what is, what is a green street? What do we do? And the bias was that the way that they function?
Sure. Councilmember Garpetyan, so the intention is to have a retention facility that will capture the stormwater runoff from rain, and instead of going into the storm drain system and eventually lead into the ocean and the waters, to capture it, filter it, and then feed the landscaping with the same water that we captured as part of the stormwater runoff.
What kind of landscaping are we going to have?
Low-water usage, drought tolerant. But it should have sufficient, we should be able to capture sufficient stormwater runoff to irrigate these landscaping elements.
In the summertime that we, there is no rain, you know, with the rain in Southern California, what happens with this bioswells, and how do we, how do you irrigate the landscape?
Right. So if we don't get any water at all throughout the year, because if we do, in the winter, it retains it, right? Acts as a storm, as a storage tank. If we don't, then we'll watergate it with water trucks.
I think that's being, the new laws that are coming up from the state, I don't know if that's going to be allowed or not, but we need to look into it because my understanding is that there are, it's not be, it's not going to be permissible to use the trucks to water any public landscape.
We can use recycled reclaimed water.
Reclaimed, you can, just not potable. Yes. But hopefully, through the use of drought tolerant, that would be minimum if at all needed, hopefully.
Okay. Excellent.
Any other comments? One question. Is, this is the area that's supposed, in the plans for the park area, is it not in front of the library, or is it simply trees at the street line or curb?
Mayor Devine, all the work will be within the street right away.
Okay.
It won't encroach into the parkland or parking lot. The trees and landscaping will be planted in the parkway, adjacent to the curb, right behind the curb.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetyan?
Since I wasn't here when this was approved, and I don't know enough about it, I'm going to abstain.
Najarian? Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is Director of Public Works and Community Services on Parks regarding request for the proposals for the design and build of the Maple Park and Maryland Avenue shade structures project. View one is a resolution authorizing Director of Public Works, who is, does he need to prepare a request for proposal for design and construction of the Maple Park and Maryland Avenue shade structure project using a design-build project delivery method, authorizing the city clerk to solicit proposals.
Thank you. Mr. Ochoa?
Very exciting. The council had adopted the Development Impact Fee Strategic Plan, and at the direction of council, we are returning forthwith to present to you, it'll be the first project to tap into those $16 million worth of funds. As I mentioned in the previous budget study session, this move, this money would be part of an appropriation in the current fiscal year. So with that, Mr. Galani will talk about design-build and why it's appropriate for this project.
Thank you, Ms. Ochoa. Madam Mayor, members of city council, the scope of work for the Maple Park shade structure includes the installation of four hard-lid shade structures at these four locations shown on the slide. The A unit will provide coverage for two standard rectangular-shaped, rectangular-sized picnic tables, and they will have a size of 25 feet by 25 feet. The B unit will cover, will provide coverage for a single rectangular-shaped picnic table, and its size will be almost half, 12 by 12 feet. And for the location at C, we are proposing a half-hexagon-shaped shade structure. This was recommended by the manufacturer. We visited at the site, and because of the existing mature trees that provide shade to one side of the picnic area, this would provide the maximum coverage and maximum shade for the other side, in the meantime, preserving the mature trees around the, these are the concrete round tables that have, that are located west side of the community center. This is a close-up view of the design, A and B, essentially hard-lid shade structures on four posts, pretty standard.
They, is that a tile roof, or is that a, what kind of roof?
It's like metal seam?
Hard lid, yeah.
What is?
Metal.
Metal.
Yes. And this is a close-up view of the half-hexagon, and it spans 40 feet across. It'll be slightly tilted. As for Maryland Avenue, the shade structures, we are proposing two different sizes at two locations. The A unit, the A design, will cover approximately 3,000 square feet in area. This will cover the larger playground equipment at the north side of the park. And the B design will cover 1,200 square feet approximately and provide shade for the lower or the smaller playground area. This is a close-up of the design A, essentially two overlapping synthetic fabric shades on seven posts. And this is design B, one single synthetic fabric on four posts, and this will be for the smaller playground equipment. The anticipated project schedule, if approved, will start advertising the project for bids within the next couple of weeks. We will receive and select the most responsive contractor in July. Council will award the contract in August. After the certification of the contract, the contractor can go ahead and order the shade structure units for both parks. In the meantime, in September, they can start the site prep work. We expect a six-to-eight week delivery of the units, which should arrive sometime in October, start the installation of the units in November, and be done by December of 2016. As Mr. Ochoa mentioned, this is a design-build contract. We are recommending this project delivery method that would save us time and cost because we can transition from design to construction directly and immediately. We will eliminate one step in the process. Our engineer's estimate for the contract, both design and build installation, is 275,000 with a 10% contingency, and construction management cost with total 318,000. And we have already allocated 325,000 in development impact fees. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay.
And I do stand corrected, ma'am. I'm sorry to interrupt. We are actually going to let this accrue to next year's budget. We'll see it in the upcoming presentation. There was a debate whether or not we would pull that out of next year or appropriate it now. In fact, we're just going to leave it in next year's appropriation. So my apologies.
Um, it's Councilmember Sananian?
It's more of a comment than, well, I guess, comment than a question. I liked the proposed designs for Maryland Park, but the proposed Model A for, yeah, that, is there anything more creative we could put that served this function but wouldn't be this sort of old-school, classic, unseemly, I think?
The ones in Maple seem to be a little bit more current and kind of more creative than this.
You mean the Maryland, right? Yeah. Is there no better alternative to this?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Duran, who had a part in selection of this design.
I will tell you that as you look at, it comes into a couple of different things. The push now from many of the manufacturers is to do the sales. We had understood from council that you didn't want the sales, but rather something structural. To the extent that this is a standing seam kind of roof on four posts, the beauty of design-build is that as we give our directive at the front end to the designer, they can incorporate that in. So I guess my question and request for direction would be, if we are looking at something structural, is it a function of just the creativity of the type of structure that you would like to see, or is it a certain material that you'd like to see? Because that ultimately gets dialed into the design-build.
And if I may add, typically throughout the city parks, we have installed, say, the synthetic fabric sail shades over playgrounds, and our picnic areas usually receive these types of more sturdy, more functional shade covers.
The sails let some light through, don't they?
Certain degree of light, yes, they do.
So I can understand why you'd want, you know, something hard, right? Because it's not opaque at all, but...
No, I get it.
No, no, but I agree, the aesthetics of this are...
Yeah. Design, I may, Madam Mayor.
Something to be desired. Councilmember Garpetyan?
Yeah, actually, we, we had a tour of the, I was very adamant about having shade structures in this area, and we had a tour, and Rubik and Mr. Duran were nice enough to give me a tour of the other facilities that they have, the shade, the kites, basically, that's what they're called, the fabric. And they are really taller. They're like 14 feet tall, and if it's lower, they have to have sprinklers in there based on the fire code. And they don't create enough shade in those picnic areas versus playgrounds. So this is maybe, the other ones are more appealing because they're colorful and everything else, but as far as practical, being practical, these are very much, much practical.
So I guess my follow-up question would be, is there anything that's still practical and fits that, you know, what you said, but is a little more aesthetically pleasing? And the answer may be no. I'm just asking.
We can certainly work with the manufacturer to find out if there are alternatives in sail shade structures that would fit this environment better.
I think they're saying to do a sail structure, they're saying to do a permanent hard structure, but to do one that's nicer looking.
A little better looking.
They're not suggesting a...
Well, colors can be...
I understand. Councilmember Sananian, though, to shape, to change the shape of the metal, the hard lid, will require additional structural calculations, that the wind effects are going to be different, and it will require larger posts and larger footings. The reason they use sails with different shapes and curved and kite-shaped structures is because they require less amount of footings, smaller posts, and hence cheaper, to be honest.
But to that extent, I think if, drawing from what council is giving us, I think while the roof structure probably remains pretty standard, to the extent that the posts would have some type of design or decoration to them to make it look more like it belongs in a park setting. Our folks can be very creative, as you've seen, and especially in Maryland Avenue Park. I think we can take that direction and incorporate that into the design-build.
Okay, thank you. And that's what I asked.
Something like maybe putting tiles around those, the posts?
Lots of different things that are more aesthetic than structural. I think that's what Rubik gets concerned with, but I think we hear loud and clear what the council wants.
I think we're just trying to make an excuse to keep Just Duran around a little bit longer. If we, you know, if we make this anymore, you'll stick around. Congratulations on your, okay. Do we have a consensus then?
I'm, I'm...
On the direction?
No, I'll second it.
Okay. Motion?
Move and second.
You moved second. Roll call, please. Thank you, Rubik.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item under hearings, 9A, is Director of Finance regarding fiscal year 2016-17 proposed citywide budget and fee schedule for the city of Glendale. This is a report-only.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing, and Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, ma'am. After three budget study sessions and hours of meetings and deliberations by council that was kicked off actually going back to April with your goal-setting, what we will present to you in a relatively abbreviated form, in consideration of all that you have observed and given input on in terms of our budget, we have our hearing tonight. So tonight is a report-only, taking testimony from the public, certainly the staff taking direction from the council, but the actual vote on the budget is slated for June the 14th. So with that being said, we'll go through very quickly the general fund, proposed budget, all of our other funds that the city maintains, the brief organizational profile to address a couple of questions that council had at your last study session, and then finalize the fee study based on the changes that council had made previously, as well as the request as it pertained to Mills Act contracts and fee cost recovery on processing those contracts, and then certainly take any kind of question that the council has. So as we look ahead to the coming year for 1617 in terms of proposed resources, you see that we are focusing on $194.7 million for the coming year's resources. You will note that we begin there at 187 along the top. We have, again, strong property tax growth, sales tax growth, moderate utility user tax growth, that is as much a function of conservation as anything else because it is demand-driven. We see an increase in the TOT as a function of the measure that was approved by voters last year. Ongoing demand for service by way of permits and fees, but you see that the, the actual cost has diminished as reflection of where the economy is in terms of the build-out, both in downtown Glendale as well as the rest of the community. What we're seeing now is really a steady stream of fees, but the valuations are lower, suggesting that they're smaller projects. Our cost allocation is down. That's the cost that we charge other departments for a general fund-based departments like ISD and finance and other places. The GRA loan repayment, I will tell you, we show that as, as down 920,000. That's really going, it's a moving target, a function of what the state of California will pay us for the loan reimbursement now that the city has twice been successful in court against the state of California. So that number most definitely will change, but until we actually receive the check, we're programming that number to be down from what it was in the previous year. And then other revenues as they come in to the, the general fund. With the use of, you see the $920,000, that's the signed use of economic development. We are collapsing, as you know, the Economic Development Program into the general fund as opposed to being a standalone fund. And as part of our previous strategy to alleviate the backlog for projects in community development, building and safety, and planning in particular, we are using hourly salaries, hourly personnel, to help us process and increase the, the velocity of applications going through so that those small projects that I mentioned don't get backlogged behind some of the larger projects that are there. We had originally, last year, contemplated that while we would end up with about a $2.7 million surplus in the current fiscal year, that we would have about a $1.9 million deficit in the coming fiscal year. As it turns out, we'll be about 2.4 to the good current year and about $1 million deficit next year, as we show you the multi-year projections that portray Glendale's structural balance going forward. In terms of appropriations, you see moderate growth to match the, the resources that we have, growth, small growth in salaries. PERS continues to grow up. Again, those use of economic development, hourly employees, some increase in overtime and other benefits. It's worth noting that the, the unblending of medical rates has allowed us to realize a cost savings over what would have been our cost in medical benefits, and rather significant cost at that. And so we are very pleased to see what the impact has been from that strategic decision by the city council. In any event, we saw a reduction in our liability insurance, our fleet charges, as I mentioned, ISD charges generally down, some moderate income or increase in M&amp;O accounts, non-personnel but maintenance operations in the general fund. All in, and the use of that undesignated fund balance, we are counting on $194,780,000. Let's talk a little bit about that general fund and those increases. We're looking at $5.6 million year-over-year. The major driver there is our PERS cost. It is up 2.3 versus $3 million last year. There is some increase in, in the salaries. As you recall, the contract was granted to Glendale Management Association, Glendale City Employees Association. Both of those show 3%, but as you recall, kind of a reflection of the new way of doing business, there was a 3% raise and a 1% give-back by those associations negotiated that goes directly to pay for our PERS cost sharing. So again, our employees paying more of the cost of their own employment than any other public employees in the state of California. Increase in workers' comp fund, you know that that deficit is 14.4 million. It was 23 million. We're driving that down. It will be amortized over the next five years, just as we did with the liability fund, such that that fund, the liability fund, is now healthy and is no longer in deficit and rather has a decent fund balance. In terms of $1.7 million, we'll talk about what that looks like in personnel costs, and then again, $700,000 in hourly wages and CD. and then again, $700,000 in hourly wages and CDD. For maintenance and operations, that 5.4 million, you'll see this as you look at all the departments side-by-side, you know that we are centralizing all of our building maintenance costs, similar to what we did previously with fleet, with what we did with information technology charges, and by centralizing, we're achieving an economy of scale and better management over the maintenance of all of our buildings. So here too, we, long time coming, with centralizing building maintenance programs. So there will be an increase to some of the general fund departments, you'll see a decrease that is equivalent, that is offsetting in the Public Works Department, so their budget will go down, other departments will go up, but it's effectively the same dollar amount going through, and the idea is, again, to make those departments responsible, have them have some skin in the game when it comes to the maintenance of their buildings. We have, as I mentioned, the collapsing of the economic development program into the general fund, that's that $1.1 million increase, that is just fund balance into the general fund, not necessarily going to be a bunch of new programs and new people, that is just the fund balance coming back in. We see an increase in the internal service, the ISD service charge, that's our technology charge, as departments continue to save up money for investments, reinvestments in technology that they use every day to provide services. There is a very limited amount of actual program restoration to the tune of $711,000, small increase in elections budget, and an increase in graphics, in our graphics operation, in large part due to the productivity that they are experiencing with GUSD as a primary customer. We are able to do a great deal of work with GUSD, and I think they're very appreciative of getting a terrific price from City of Glendale, our graphics operation. We talk about capital, and that is the increased $907,000, which is not as robust as it been previously, but we'll talk about where you see the bulge of the $16 million in DIF funds. It wouldn't necessarily be here in the general fund. But the big push here is a $1.1 million increase from the general fund to the CIP program for street improvement projects. Mr. Galanian brought to you the pavement management index. We enjoy very good streets as they are rated under the index, but if we want to keep them that way and with gas tax flat and trending downward nationwide, then we have to use city resources to shore up all of our street resurfacing programs. And so council, wanting to prioritize the infrastructure, making sure that we have good streets to drive on, is putting $1.1 million there. You saw in our last city council study session, the increase in transfer for certificates of participation, this is the remaining debt on the police department building. We saw the decrease in the transfer to economic development because we're bringing economic development back into the general fund. I would tell you that the low mod income housing fund for 20% set aside affordable housing is down, but that should not represent that we are intentionally putting less money into affordable housing, but rather it's a reflection of the money that we get from the state as a result of the dissolution of redevelopment. As I say, once the loan repayment comes through, then 20% of those repaid funds to the City of Glendale from the state of California will accrue to low mod housing, along with 20% of the bond proceeds that will ultimately be released, and so, as you've discussed, we will have about $16 million over the coming few years to be utilized for new affordable housing developments. In terms of capital outlay, just a reduction in the hardware that we have here, the capital, seats, chairs, things like that, is down, and then an increase in nutritional meals as those programs are characterized as capital. I mentioned the 1.7 in personnel. It's a little bit deceiving, what you see on that fourth bullet point down, personnel shifts at a little over $900,000, $930,000. These are not new bodies, these are existing bodies that the city has, and we're moving them back into the general fund, so the general fund personnel cost is going to increase. The council gave us a direction and permission to move CDBG funding out, or to move code enforcement funding out of CDBG and into the general fund to the tune of $400,000. We also have a paramedic, an existing paramedic that's in the EMS fund, we're moving back to the general fund, and then you see in police department, as we await new grant funding for new programs, those officers' positions need to be pushed back to the general fund. You will see that we do have a series of reallocations in library arts, culture, CDD, that will result in those remaining amounts of money. And you see the 26 positions that are there, $206,000 by way of a reallocation. There is one new position in this mix here, and that is a community services specialist. Council is giving us authorization to expand the One Glendale After School Sports Program from four elementary schools to eight elementary schools. Council has become quite the fan of this program, as has the GUSD, and I think it's making actually a very real impact on young folks' lives, especially in central and southern Glendale. We continue to work well with managing hourly wages, you see that there. And then some other interesting items that are making up that $237,000, almost $238,000 there at the bottom, by way of Public Works Technician Certification Program. I do believe that what you'll see in the years to come is increasingly competency-based pay. The more skills you have, the more things you can do, the more valuable you are, and thus there are incentives built into the system for you. We are seeing this in the police department pay dividends, and I think that this innovative program will be very useful in the Public Works Department as well. In terms of M&amp;O, we have a smattering of any number of things that you see, from codebooks to after-school sports programs that the council had directed the city to pick up as opposed to putting into the mix with CDBG social services programming. There again, you see the One Glendale After School Sports Program at $157,000. Yes, sir?
Microphone. Sorry. Came back from a long block.
The auto allowance for $20,700, can you tell me what that is?
Yes, we have a number of employees that do use their vehicles that should be receiving auto allowance pursuant to their MOU, respective MOUs, Memoranda of Understanding for their Employment, yet we don't have that budgeted anywhere. That has just been a departmental expenditure, so I'm trying to call things by their right names, we are putting that in as a line item. These are inspectors primarily who use their vehicle, who otherwise are entitled and do receive some degree of car allowance, but it isn't really called that. So we want to be able to log it here, and you know what it is, and everyone knows that it's supposed to be there by way of the MOU.
So they have their own, they use their own vehicles?
That's true, sir.
Thank you.
Fire, this is a reflection outside of those codebooks, but you see the hose valves, thermal imagers for the two fire stations that we are scheduled to replace this year, citywide emergency supply replacement kits, although it's housed in the fire department, that is something for the entire city. And you see just the replacement of the self-contained breathing apparatus bottles. In Public Works, some small items, the repair of those crash cushions there on Fairmont Bridge, and painting through the city, very expensive paint for the markings on the street. So, as I say, the revenue is about $193.77 million, appropriation's a little bit more, so we're looking at a use of fund balance of $1 million. This is down from the projected $1.9 million that we provided you even as late, I believe at six months into the budget, so we are definitely trending positive. Here you see what the unassigned charter reserve is, as you know, the council's policy is to maintain 30% undesignated fund balance in case of emergency. Our target is 35, we typically hover anywhere from 32 to 36, and here we are at 33.2%. So we are doing quite well. I mentioned that structural balance, here is the 1617 general fund forecast that takes you through fiscal year '21-'22. You can see that we are optimistic about the future, but we are conservative in terms of what our projections on revenue growth are, when you look at our baseline appropriations, same types of conservative view of how we can control costs. The variable that we don't control is PERS. The good news here is that we have been very conservative in projecting our PERS rates, and PERS has obliged by telling us as the rates are going up there every bit what we thought they were going to be. So at least, I guess the plus there is that there's no surprises. What you see right below there is the PERS cost share. That is the actual real dollars that contribute toward the employer's share of the PERS cost that is contributed by our employees themselves. Again, many cities in California still feature the employee paying, or the employer paying both the employee share and the employer's share, or the majority of both. Here in Glendale, the employee pays the employee share, and the employee pays a rather significant chunk of the employer's share. You see changes and increases in CIP, internal service funds, that's fleet, that's ISD, insurance, all that good stuff. You see the certificates of participation as the debt has been structured, that remaining $38 million for the police building, and there along the bottom, you have the tail of the tape. So we will end this year at $2.4 million, on the very bottom there, Bob. And you have $1 million deficit going in this coming year, and then we start to trend ever so slightly back to the positives. So we do have some limited capacity in the operation, but of course, that means that we have to manage our costs, our cost drivers, very, very carefully. That bright shining day of '21-'22, '22-'23, and so on, is effectively when PERS rates begin to flatten out. We talk about all of our other funds. Now you saw the general fund, that's the one that people spend the most time focused on, across the top, $194.78 million. We do have any number of funds from special revenue, debt service funds, CIP, enterprise funds, internal service. You looked at these in depth in, I believe, study session number two, and all in the city's budget for the coming year, we anticipate at $819,500,000 and change, $2.7 million increase. The big driver that you see there is, the one that stands out, is 84.4% increase in capital improvement funds, and that is where that $16 million for development impact fees is housed. These are the general fund departments. You see, as I had mentioned, that everyone is going to trend upwards, some more than others, but most of the departments in the general fund are trending upwards because of that consolidation of the building maintenance fund as well as increases in ISD charges. Again, the ISD folks will take stock of what it is that you need to implement by way of your software needs, and then begin collecting money from you, the respective department, in order to do, we save up the money and then we expend the money. That's why you see their budget, their capital expenditures, if you will, ebbing and flowing over time. The big jump here that you see, community development, is the return of the parks, or I'm sorry, the return of the CDBG and the economic development program, as well as charges that I just mentioned, and similarly, you see some increase by way of community services and parks and the limited program restoration that we had discussed. Not too much more movement, but again, notably, the decrease in Public Works is the offset of those building maintenance charges to the line departments. The retirement incentive, that question had come up, and I'll have a slide a little bit later for you to talk about that. You'll recall that in fiscal year '12-'13, we initiated a retirement incentive to take cost off of our books by way of our employees, because as a service business, our primary cost in the general fund is employees, and so this is the last year of that retirement incentive cost. The non-departmental that you see there is the retiree health savings program that you authorized previously, and that is the, that was the negotiated, if you will, buyout of that OPEB liability that went along with unblending the medical rates. That expenditure effectively saves you, we go from what would be next year $270 million worth of liability on our books, down to $25 million liability on our books. Not easy, not fun, but something that the council did, and I think when you look at the simple math, it makes a heck of a lot of sense from a business perspective. All of our special revenue funds really are driven by forces beyond the city's control. CDBG, for example, is up a little bit, because HUD has a little bit more money for CDBG this year, surprisingly. At the same time, you see other HUD programs, Emergency Solutions Grant Fund is a reflection of HUD's desire to move towards a housing-first program and offer relatively fewer resources for transitional housing and some of the casework that goes along with it. Urban Workforce Investment Act Fund is up a little bit, especially due to the hard work of the folks at the VJC. They are very good at obtaining funding for the program that serves job seekers throughout the Glendale and Burbank-Rodugo region. Urban Art, this is not, this is just the money that is budgeted for the coming year, not reflective of the overall fund balance, which is in the millions. The Glendale Youth Alliance is partially driven by grants, partially driven by operations. Begin, and as I mentioned previously, low mod housing fund really derives program revenue as well as revenue from whatever comes back from the state by way of the dissolution of redevelopment. Economic Development Fund, as you see there, is closed out, 100% changed to the negative, that'll be collapsed into the general fund. You see all of the other monies that are there, the ones that I would point out to you are the transit funds, Measure R, local return, the Prop A, Prop C, and Transit Utility Funds, all of which speaking to the operation of the B-line, as well as the accumulation of funding for the construction of our, the bus maintenance facility down just south of San Fernando Road. So the asset forfeiture fund, I guess I'll leave on, you see that that is down ever so slightly, and I think that speaks to our ongoing combating with the state over what the city is allowed to keep versus what is taken from us in terms of asset forfeiture. That used to be an opportunity for us to augment police department funding, and increasingly it's under attack.
Are you tracking some of those, some of the proposed legislation to do away with asset forfeiture?
Yes, absolutely.
Because I think I mentioned once that ICA, the Independent Cities Association, is trying to get the cities to all weigh in together, you know, in terms of resolutions and lobbying, so I just hope that, you know, we use them as leverage, that we all, all the cities, you know, together weigh in on the issue.
Absolutely, we will, we do. I think the chief would tell you that, I think the police chiefs in LA County in particular are trying to hold one another accountable to ensure that the asset forfeiture money is going to practical police programs as opposed to some of the types of expenditures, military surplus things that gather lots of attention and headlines but aren't necessarily practical on a daily basis.
And also that, and I know that we don't have this, but that we also make sure that we have standards and that the forfeitures are done correctly, because this is a backlash, of course, to some abuses that we've seen in other parts of the country. I don't think so much California, but other places.
Absolutely.
If I can, since we're sort of getting segwayed a little bit, but the Measure R got mentioned, I want to ask, and I'm seeking for support from one of our fellow council members, to do a study or do some kind of a report, and the sooner the better, on the Measure R2 negotiations that are happening on Metro, because I feel like we need to be very involved and invested in what's happening, because we'll be on the receiving end of half a cent tax increase. The question is, will we be getting anything in return? My understanding is that neither Glendale nor any transit plan that Glendale is a part of, i.e. Rapid Transit, is a separate line item on Measure R, and I understand that people are going back and forth, you know, they're negotiating, some are trying to get on, some are trying to, you know, some are being taken off, but at this point, we are not part of it, and I'm very troubled by it, so... Do I have someone?
I second that, and I also want to add on to that, that we also have inner-city programs for our transportations, public transportation, that we're not getting any dollars for at this time, and I think that's a shame. Measure R is gone, and Measure R2 is coming, was $33 billion, now it's going to be about $50 or $55 billion new money, and Glendale is nowhere to be seen on that roster. So we need to fight for it, if not, we have to oppose it. Why do we have to pay taxes if it's going to be used only in, I'm going to say it, in San Francisco and City of LA? So these two cities are controlling all the funds, and we have to, we have to fight for it, so if it's not going to come to Glendale, I'm not going to support it.
I think there are, the good news is, most cities in LA County are realizing that the second-tier operators like our B-line Burbank-Pasadena and what have you, and even LA Department of Transportation are fighting for more money. MTA has been loath to give it. An increase in the local return is important, but to the point of not being specifically listed as fixed route and even rail, that is where Glendale has historically been left out, and that's what we're fighting for now at the council's direction. We will bring you back that report, because those discussions are still very, very fresh.
Thank you.
Again, you see the ebb and flow in the Recreation Fund for different projects that were budgeted last year, and you'll see come under construction in this coming year. For example, that sports complex, the batting cages, other types of fun stuff that was approved previously, that is now getting into construction. You also have other funds here that are driven primarily, and special revenue funds that are driven primarily... that are driven primarily through usage and by rates, thus the electric public benefit fund. And last but not least, the parking fund. So it's just a function of what it is that we were spending. We're bringing to a close the parking modernization program at our public parking structures. And then we'll get back into more of a typical maintenance and operation mode while we build up that fund balance again. Debt service fund, as I mentioned previously, we've augmented the amount that we pay for the, really, the only debt that exists on the city's general fund by way of the police department building. Capital improvement funds, this is the main event that I think folks have been most excited about. When you look at community services and parks, again, this is not the DIF just yet, but this is the CIP, I'm sorry to use all the acronyms, but the capital improvement program for 401, that's the city's general fund. So embedded in that 1.4 million is the remaining $500,000 that was requested for dictation, as well as other parks and programs that the department is working on, some improvements to fire stations. You'll see the completion of the Central Library project. And Shoal Canyon, the mitigation fund is still generating the amount of money that we have to put aside for the day when Shoal Canyon does in fact close. When you look at gas taxes, I mentioned, gas tax continues to go down. In this country, we fund a lot of road and transportation with a fixed cents per gallon as opposed to a percentage that keeps up with CPI. So as cars have become more gas efficient, as people generally are using less, as the economy ebbs and flows, you see this as an unstable source of funding for the, for the street maintenance program. Hence, the city is looking to put its own general fund monies towards this project. There at 405 is the shark and the third reel of the movie, the park mitigation fee fund, $16 million for everything that was listed in the council's, the strategic plan that you adopted, not the least of which are the two soccer fields that are slated for Columbus and for Wilson schools. And those environmental processes will kick off very, very soon. I'm sure Jess wishes he was around for those, or maybe not. But you'll see that that work will get underway post-haste, as well as the all-access or universal access play apparatus at Maple and at Verdugo Park. Enterprise funds are those funds that operate as much like a business as anything else. And so, and so what you see here is, for all of our, those utility funds, you know, from sewer and refuges to water and power, and the fire communication fund at the bottom there is Verdugo dispatch. That's where we contract out with many other agencies to provide their dispatch for them, kind of a centralized operation that is both effective and extraordinarily efficient. Here you see us beginning to wind down in the bond proceeds that we have by way of GWP Electric and GWP Water. We'll hit the remaining projects over the last two or three years of that funding horizon. You know that in the sewer fund, that we are doing the Chevy Chase lifter project, the sewer diversion project this year, and that some funding will probably come back to make some amendments to that project in the coming fiscal year. But generally speaking, the sewer fund is about a third of that is capital, and the rest is operations for those folks that work to make sure that there are no obstructions in the sewer line. The refuse disposal fund, by contrast, is about 92% operations, the actual collection, disposal of Glendale residents and businesses trash. When you look at electric, about a half of that is the procurement of power, and maybe another 42% of that is the operations cost. But the point being that buying power and buying gas, natural gas, to fund the generators is an exorbitant part of that operation. And by, in relation, when you look at the water program, about a third of that is the cost of water that we buy from MWD. So altogether, still a very robust capital improvement project. Lastly, when we talk about the internal service funds, and then after that, we'll mercifully be done with this part of the presentation. These are, the fleet, as I said, we've recently centralized fleet, we'll be doing a strategic plan for fleet in the coming year. And so while we have gotten departments to shed all unnecessary equipment, I think that we can be a little sharper still. And I look forward to presenting you with that strategic plan in the coming fiscal year. Joint helicopter operation is our partnership with Burbank for the helicopter program. ISD, infrastructure and applications, I run out of Brian Ganley's shop, that's all of the hardware, software that we use, and that has to be replaced. You'll see the big jump in applications. Last year was the Munis program. We don't have that expenditure in the coming fiscal year, thus the drop. The building maintenance fund is brand-new, and that's why you don't see any expenditure or adopted amount for '15, '16, but you do see it for '16, '17. And as I mentioned, some good news on unemployment insurance, so we were able to see a reduction there in terms of what the cost is. Liability insurance, the liability insurance fund, we still have that very healthy balance over the long term, based on what it was previously and what we were able to do by making it a priority in funding that, eliminating that deficit. And we will do the same thing with workers' comp. On the medical insurance, as I mentioned, this would have been about $1.2 or $1.3 million higher, had it been, had it not been for the unblending of rates. So most certainly, the city was able to save itself cost and extend that cost savings to some degree to our employees as well, depending on their insurance program. RHSP health benefits is kind of our effort to move towards that defined contribution program by way of front-ending the retiree health savings benefits, giving those employees something on the front end while they're here. That way, they can save up for when they do retire, they have money that can be used tax-free for medical, allowed medical benefits and medical premiums. And then the wireless fund is also ISD, that's all the radios and everything that we do with our employees. When you look at the summary of appropriations, again, just by way of recap, again, next year, all-in, $119,533,000. Getting back to a question that was asked both by Councilman Garpetian and by Mayor Devine, looking at positions, where have we been and where are we going and where are we now? You see our high watermark in '05, '06, 1,995 positions. In '12, '13 is where we began cutting, so we dropped down to '16, '05. And if you're wondering, are we just waiting to add all those positions back? I think as you look at '16, '17, where we are still down below $1,600, should give you an indication that we are trim, efficient. And when you look at our deliverables by way of our goal attainment and key performance indicators, we are very, very effective indeed. I have to say, I'm very proud of the employees that we have and the management team. Specifically to a question that was raised by the mayor, when you look at the retirement incentive, and folks have said, well, you did this retirement incentive, did it work? When you are comparing, you've seen a version of this slide over the last couple of study sessions. There across the top, you see the authorized full-time positions, and right below it, if Bob will move the cursor over, you'll see the filled, actual positions in that year. So we would carry some amount of vacancies. In '11, '12 was a year before I got here, we started cutting, not that I'm proud that we were cutting, but we did end up having to cut, got down to '16, '05 authorized positions. We had 1488 actual people employed of those '16, '05 positions. In '12, '13, we went to the PARs retirement incentive. So this was basically a service credit program worth six months, or I'm sorry, worth, geez, I can't think, two years, two years. Two years PRS credit, so you got two years of credit towards your pension if you left by date certain. That was implemented through '12, '13, and '13, '14. In fiscal year '14, '15, we did another incentive. By then, Pepper had disallowed the PARs retirement incentive, so we did a six-month separation incentive, basically served as a six-month severance. And so in those two years, we shed 376 positions, you see in that upper right-hand box, through the PARs incentive, through the separation incentive, and then through some limited amount of layoffs, and especially just position eliminations. Positions that were not full or filled and had not been filled, we did our best just to get rid of them. The takeaway here is, as you look at total salaries and you look at total benefits going from left to right, total salaries in '11 and '12 were $166.7 million. Total salaries and benefits were $236 million. We dropped to $152.7 and $216 million respectively. And if you follow that line across and you do that simple math, the estimated savings for the coming fiscal year, as I mentioned earlier, the retirement incentive is paid off over five years, about $1.9 million a year for, you know, a little bit more than that, probably about a little over, almost $11 million for the entire incentive, and then a bit more for the severance program, the six-month separation retirement incentive. All-in, we paid about $14.2 million, or will have paid, $14.2 million by the end of the coming fiscal year. However, by the end of the coming fiscal year, we also will have saved about $65.2 million for a net savings of $51 million. So in terms of the strategic actions taken by the city council, I think that you can point to these hard numbers that are indisputable and say, yes, it worked, and yes, we were able to save that cost. And yet, again, when you look at our deliverables by way of KPIs and goal attainment, I think while the organization has become extraordinarily trim and efficient, we are relying on technology, we have streamlined process, and we are allowing more people to make more decisions, you see that we haven't really allowed the community to feel the impact of the diminution of service levels. We're going on more calls than we've ever gone on in police and fire, processing more permits, and having tremendous amounts of success through our line departments. Folks may say, well, you were at $236 million in '11, '12, and you're budgeted, not actual, but budgeted, for $241 in '16, '17. That's true, but keep in mind that had we not made those cuts, that number would be well north of $241 million, because you would not have cut them back in '12, '13. So again, $51 million of savings that is ongoing, because as long as we keep the position count down, we will realize those savings. When folks say, well, what about management? Is management bloated? I would tell you that management is anything but bloated. You see our position count broken down between manager, supervisor, technical professional, general employees over our 1579 budgeted bodies. If you look at the employee count, management is a mere 11% accounting for almost 17% of salary. This is across all funds. Our target is not exceeding 25%, so we very easily met that target.
How do you set those targets? What's your criteria?
23 years of experience and looking at organizations and saying that departments, those organizations that have a management ratio in excess of 25% generally are going to be pretty bloated. Or what you're seeing, the management is making far more than what they should be making, or there's more of them than there needs to be, by way of just a trim, efficient organization.
Yes, if we looked at most of the surrounding cities?
They're going to be probably hovering where we were, around 19, 20, 22%, I believe, is where we were. On all funds, on the general fund, it's 12.1 million, or I'm sorry, 12.1% is the employee count. So in the general fund, 12.1% of the employees are managers, 12.7 are supervisors, 10.6% of the employees are technical professionals, and almost 64.6% are general employees, line-level employees. And you see the salary numbers there. This is just the non-general fund. So this would be all of those other funds that we walk through outside of the general fund and similar types of numbers there. Yes, sir?
So the personal and general fund, there are police and fire, and who else?
Police, fire, libraries, most of libraries, most of parks, management services, HR, finance, city attorney's office, city treasurer, city clerk. And then in parts of, almost all of CDD now, parts of public works. So when you get non-general fund, you're going to pick up the GWP folks, a big chunk of public works employees, and some smattering of other employees, some in CSP that are funded by those sources outside of the general fund, like the Verdugo Job Center employees, those folks.
I think we need to define management and supervisors in more practical terms, because the way I look at it, if I, if I don't know anything about it and I look at these numbers, I would say we have one manager and one supervisor for every five and a half employees. In general fund, I think we need to look at it differently and basically define exactly what their job title is. In a general report like this, this is a budget report, so, because if I look at it and say, well, there's 1.4 and 1.9 manager and supervisor for every five and a half employee, then it would look really off, because how would five people need one manager and one supervisor? So I think the job titles are a little bit different, but it's in general terms. I think that's something we need to look at, and we want to define what the, who the managers are and who the supervisors are.
Okay, I mean, we can bring you back to that report. There is a rather robust test that we apply to see who is a manager, who is not a manager, that looks at their authority for hiring, firing, evaluation over employees, budget control, section control, and then the scope of, the scope of management. And so if you meet three of the four, then we would classify you as a manager or not manager. But we'd be happy to go through that with you. When you look across the entire organization, salaries, benefits, operating costs, personnel versus operating costs, we're looking for a ratio not to exceed 35%. So no more than 35% of those non-capital costs would go towards salaries and benefits. Here in all funds, we're at 33%, so we meet the target. And you see that we have been doing well to drive that number down. From '11, '12, we were in excess of the target, and we've been driving it down ever since. By the same token, here in the general fund, we're not quite there. The target is 75%, and yet we are at 77, so we still have some work to do there. But it is a sight better than where we were in '11, '12 at 85%, going towards salaries and benefits. Lastly, the fee discussion, just by way of review, there are 24, more than 2,400 fees for service that the city features that are contained in the fee study that you have for you. We are not recommending any changes to 1,676 of those. We're deleting 77 of them, decreasing to existing fees of another 75, an increase on 238 of them. And those 238 reflect the council's directive to move towards cost recovery. And generally, these are going to be fees that apply to a private benefit. And so whereas you would have, maybe we were recovering 10% of the cost to provide a service, council's directed that we will move towards a higher level, in some cases even 100% cost recovery, depending on what the program is. Other efforts, other areas, you choose to subsidize, because you want people to spay and neuter their dogs. You want people to be able to do any number of programs and tasks that are beneficial in your view towards the community benefit. And we also have fees that are market-driven, that basically we're asking you to increase by the CPI, as you recall. We didn't increase these fees last year because the CPI was so small, so we just skipped a year, and now we're looking to increase them in the coming year. There are 52 new fees that were detailed for you last week. The only remaining item from last week's rather robust discussion about fees was on the issue of historic preservation and the Mills Act, processing Mills Act requests. The current fee total, all-in, with the surcharge is 1479. That would be reduced to about $1,300 by elimination of the tech surcharge, as we have contemplated for the coming fiscal year. And at that point, we began the discussion with the council as to what you want that fee level to be. There in the middle, you see the FY '16, '17 fee options, the full cost recovery rates. So if you wanted to recover 25% of the cost, it would be 1,900 and change, 50% would be 3,800, 100% would be 7,681. The council direction last week was 7,000, so we have that featured here. Council had asked for more clarification on the average tax savings that we show as 73, 82. And I believe that's for the last, a year and a half ago fiscal year or assessment year. I don't think we have last year's assessment, so that number is subject to change, but it roughly is 73, 82. Tax savings, median tax savings, 76, almost 6,800 there. And then the loss to the city by way of what our portion of that sales tax dollar is, is only $1,000. Other taxing entities fill that a little bit more than we do. And then you see the average tax break and the median tax break both hovering around 55, 56%. 55, 56%. What you had asked for, and we are bringing here, are the fees from surrounding cities, Los Angeles, Pasadena, South Pass, West Hollywood, Santa Monica, Long Beach. You see the single-family cost. You see the multifamily, commercial, and industrial costs just to the right of that. And then you have some discussion on the basis of the fee. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions and take any direction from the council. This is the public hearing, so Madam Mayor, I would urge you to open the public hearing.
I did open the public hearing previously, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. But I would like to ask if before, I have cards only on the Mills Act, and I'd like to know from Mr. Garcia, if we may discuss the entire budget without the fees and then go to the Mills Act and hear the public on the Mills Act. Can we do that, or is it better to just discuss the entire...
You could do that, but given that, you know, you don't know, folks can get up and as they're speaking, talk about something else, it's probably just better to have all the speakers speak on...
The Mills Act.
On the Mills Act or whatever else they want to speak on, and then the council can deliberate, or it's not even deliberation, really. It's at that point, just to provide any further direction the council wants to provide before adoption next, in a couple of weeks.
Okay, so we'll take the cards first?
Madam Mayor, before you invite the speakers up, I'd like to ask just a couple of questions about that last, that's the slide, yeah, the last slide that we had on, which is, yes, okay. So it seems like, if I'm understanding this correctly, all of our neighboring cities are subsidizing the Mills Act application. Is that correct? Okay.
Effectively, sir.
Okay. And can you explain what the varies means? I mean, the Long Beach says varies, and then it says an amount per unit.
I believe in the fee basis, that's the, they're partially subsidized by the city what the variance is. I can call up Armin, and if he knows, but I'm not sure myself as a sitter. Do we know? Oh, Jay, I'm sorry.
The varies is just for the city of Long Beach, and they charge a fee that varies per unit. So if you have a duplex, it's going to have twice the fee of a single-family home. So depending on the property, the fee will change.
It says, the single-family homes also says varies, the first column.
Yeah, it's the same for both because there's also an annual inspection fee of $218. So that, I guess in the single-family, it would be a little more predictable, but the multifamily or commercial could vary more dramatically because of the per-unit cost.
Unless you answered my question.
Okay, let me...
So I understand with respect to the multiple units, because if it's, if they're counting it per unit, then I get it. But for single-family residences, it says varies, and then there's an amount per unit.
Right, so maybe varies is a little misleading there. It's $1,103 per, for the first unit, so for the single-family house, that would be the base fee.
Okay.
There is an annual inspection fee. Theoretically, that could be a different number over the course of many years, but the base fee is...
So the word varies doesn't belong there?
Probably doesn't belong there.
In other words, okay.
It belongs in the second column.
And then would the multifamily and the commu, commercial be the same then? One thou?
It's per unit, so it would be that $1,100 per unit. So if you have a four-unit apartment building, it would be $4,400 and change.
Oh, okay.
So who prepared this?
I did.
You did, okay. Do you know what the actual cost to staff is that they're trying to recover?
We don't know for most of these.
So I'm trying to determine what subsidy is in a sense.
Yeah, Long Beach...
It depends on the process, and some of these cities, and Jay may know, I don't know how many of the cities actually have done a cost study.
Oh.
Not everybody has done, believe it or not, in 2016, not everybody has done a cost study. Jay, do you know?
Yeah, and several of the cities do have a cost study. I don't have those numbers, but talking to their staff, they've said where we indicate that there's either a full or partial subsidy, they've said that it's in their, the interest of their city to subsidize their programs.
And I appreciate that, but I think that makes this a little misleading because if a subsidy is of 10%, that's one thing. If it's a subsidy of 90%, that's an entirely different proposition. So depending on how much their fee is, it makes a difference to what their, what the subsidy is because if we're comparing us to other cities, we should compare ourselves fully and see at what rate they're being subsidized.
Yeah, we need, we need more time to pull those, those cost numbers from the other cities, and sometimes they may or may not be available, so.
So if, at my understanding, that this would be held out and continued?
Oh, no, I'm just saying, this is very, very effective on, on first sight, but then when you get into it, you're, you know, you have to understand, so what's the subsidy? What is it that they're, what is each city providing in order to encourage or to stimulate the Mills Act, you know, process in their city? Makes a, makes a big difference. We can, yeah, I mean, I, you know, again, this was very impressive, so I wanted to know what it meant.
And, okay, I just wanted to point out that Pasadena has a two-tiered system. Okay, let's take Michael Morgan first and Sean Bressel. Did Sean want to, or, okay, I can switch.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, the city council staff. My name's Mike Morgan. I'm a 61-year resident of Glendale, and probably what I'm going to be covering will be covered by Sean and other people after me. I am a historical preservation commissioner, but I am speaking as a private citizen. You have before you a plan to increase the fee for Mills Act application from $1,250 to $7,000 to recover the cost, an increase, as mentioned, of more than 500%. I oppose this increase. The Mills Act is California's most important tool for encouraging private owners to restore and preserve quality historic buildings. It provides a tax, property tax reduction and recognition of the expense of restoring and maintaining these properties. The expense involved is one reason so many Glendale architectural treasures have been demolished and altered beyond recognition. In return, historic resources contributes to the beauty, reputation, and welfare of the city in irreplaceable ways. I would like the city council to vote against the proposal to increase the Mills Act application fee because, you know, I'm only going to give you a couple because I'm sure other people would do. It will effectively kill the Mills Act program, or at least limit participation to the wealthiest citizens of the city. Historic resources enrich, and I firmly believe this, the lives of all Glendale residents by making the city more attractive, desirable, and interesting. If you drive around Glendale and you see the historic resources are out there, that's what makes Glendale Glendale. So basically, I would like you, please, to reconsider any fee increase towards the Mills Act. Historic homes is what Glendale makes, is what makes Glendale unique. As May is Historic Preservation Month, how ironic, this should come before city council now. So I ask you, please reconsider any fee increase to the Mills Act and keep Glendale historic. Thank you very much.
Sean Bressel.
Good evening again, Mayor Devine and members of council. I'm Sean Bressel with the Glendale Historical Society, and I'm here on behalf of our more than 650 members to oppose the proposal to increase the Mills fee, application fee by 500% from $1,250 to $7,000, as you've already heard. As Commissioner Morgan stated, this would have a crushing effect on this important program. It will sharply curtail, if not eliminate, the nomination of properties to the Glendale Register and discourage the restoration of historic district contributors in need of repair. The proposed $7,000 fee does not adequately consider the public benefits that the preservation of historic properties confers on Glendale and its residents in all parts of the city. It also doesn't adequately consider the high cost of maintaining historic properties and council's stated interest in making contracts more available to lower-income properties. Now, the first point, as Commissioner Morgan stated, this is an incentive program, and it is California's most important tool for encouraging private property owners to restore and preserve historic buildings, which simply are more expensive to restore and maintain. Now, the owners of Mills Act properties have to, have to pledge to restore and maintain that property through a legally binding contract with the city. Now, this is not a winning lottery ticket that they get. They're not just some lucky owner that got a windfall. It's a serious financial obligation they undertake to maintain their properties at the highest standards, and there are penalties for not doing so. Now, I know the council has received almost 60 emails from members of the community about this, and a number of those, which I've read, are from owners of Mills Act properties. And if you haven't had the opportunity to read those ones in particular about the burdens that these homeowners undertake willingly, mind you, but the burdens and the cost, I really encourage you to do so. And I know there are a couple Mills Act property owners here tonight, so I hope they speak as well. So the second point that I would like to make, and the chart that was put up made it perfectly clear, this 7,000 fee would make Glendale the most expensive place we know of in the state of California to participate in the Mills Act program. As you saw from, from that chart, even at its current level, Glendale charges more, more than Los Angeles, more than Pasadena, more than South Pass, more than West Hollywood, more than Santa Monica, more than Long Beach, and Burbank doesn't even charge a fee, as I understand. Now, the third thing is, we dispute that it costs the city $7,600 to process and administer a Mills Act contract. And I would suggest to Councilmember Sinanian that, I think you were on the wrong track, but you were asking the wrong question, and that is not what's different about all those cities, it's what's different about Glendale. How come Glendale's cost is so high? And, and we've asked for the documentation of that $7,600 figure, and we've not gotten it. And I think council should drill down and find out what that, that is. There was up on the chart that the Glendale, that the register properties in those, in those communities are, are being fully subsidized in many cases. We're wondering whether the, the Glendale Register nominations are being mixed into that $7,600 figure. Even at that, it just doesn't make any sense. As your, as your city attorney can tell you, a fee cannot be legally higher than the cost of providing the service, which is the Mills Act application, it's not the Mills Act and the Glendale Register application because those can be done separately. Otherwise, it's a tax which cannot, which must be passed by the voters. And we know the Mills Act work is not burdensome. It takes five to 10 hours to process. In light of the foregoing, we encourage you to keep the Mills Act application fee at the current level. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may request, I think our city manager needs to respond.
Surely. I have not seen, unless it was embedded in the letter that was sent by Mr. Bressel, a request for the cost study, but by all means, I think Mr. Harkalian back there is very proud of his cost study, so we would gladly share that with him, schedule a time where he can come in and understand what the costs are. If there is any kind of discrepancy, we'd be glad to fix whatever that might be. However, as you look at the fully burdened cost, the cost for the people, the cost for the overhead, the cost to actually outfit the, not just the, the person that may be reviewing specifically that application, but all the people that go into approving and then later presenting that application to historic preservation and to city council, that has a cost. And I'm going to venture a guess that most of these other cities have a cost that's rather similar to ours. They have buildings, they have overheads, they have salaries, and of course, if Glendale pays the average salary, then we should be relatively average in the cost. They all have perks, unless they're part of their own retirement system. So I'm going to venture a guess that the costs are going to be rather similar across the board, but we'll hold out an opportunity to see if, if our cost is somewhat different for some reason. But to the extent that the cost is generally going to be the same, again, it comes back, as we always talk about, when it happens to be this discussion of fees, what is the public benefit? What is the private benefit? Where do they meet? And that's where the council gets to set policy.
So I'm hearing two things. One is their cost is likely to be similar.
Likely to be similar.
If, if indeed our cost is, like Mr. Bressel's suggesting, it reflects the appropriate amount of money that it takes to process these applications, I'm guessing they have to be similar.
They should be similar, yes.
Approximately. But fact is that we don't, so the cost is the cost, but they may not know what the cost is, right? Because they haven't done a cost study.
That's true, yes.
So that's why it would be essential to couple that chart with actually, you know, who's done a study, who hasn't done a study, if they've done a study. Because they've done a study, they have a cost, and they're giving a huge discount, a subsidy that makes a huge difference because then that sets precedent, then it suggests how other cities approach sort of the, the public benefit issue of it.
Sure.
Otherwise, in a vacuum, it's neither here nor there.
They, for example, we will charge the cost of monitoring in perpetuity to the extent that we can take a snapshot, model an amount of time, ascribe a cost to that time, put it into the, bake it into the cake of the overall fee, because as Mr. Bressel points out, we cannot charge more than the cost to provide that service. Absolutely. So if we do that, but let's say West Hollywood doesn't, I don't know, but let's say West Hollywood, for the sake of argument, does not do any kind of monitoring. Maybe a city doesn't have a Historic Preservation Society or Historic Preservation Commission. They present it solely to the council. They, they do a process different from ours. That will give some adjustment to that cost, but again, generally speaking, the cost should be very similar. And whether or not a city chooses to recoup the full cost then becomes the question.
Or the city chooses to even know what their cost is.
That's very true too, sir, because some cities will choose not to.
And if I, if I might suggest, if we do end up doing that sort of research, that we should have that information, what they don't do, so that we know we were comparing not apples and oranges, but everything is the same. Because if, if we find out that, let's say, let's, what, let's say Burbank, that they are actually, their service is costing the city $2,000, well, we're going to have to know why it's only costing them $2,000, not just what the amount is. So that would have to be included.
And I think Mr. Harkalian wants to say something.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, if I may add a few, few more information on the last slide we have, we got some information from the city of Los Angeles. They're actually doing a current fee study, so they're not going to have that available. We don't know when that's going to be available. We also checked with city of Pasadena, and their information is about five, six years old, and they've done internal studies, so they haven't hired a consultant to, to review those fees. And I believe city of Burbank is currently doing a fee study on that, and it's a new program for Burbank, and we'll see how that works out for them.
Councilmember Friedman?
Not to jump ahead of the, the cards too much, but I feel like the conversation about the fee is really almost irrelevant because charging full freight and a full fee, we do that at times when we feel that the action that, that the permit we're giving is for the benefit only of the individual rather than for the community. And in this case, having these, these properties listed is for the benefit of the community. And that's why we have a Mills Act contract, and that's why we're offering them a tax savings. If we thought that this was something that was just a benefit to them, then we wouldn't even have a Mills Act contract. We would just say, go fix your house. But, you know, we're doing this because we want them to maintain these properties, we want them to list the properties, so there's a tremendous public benefit, and it's not easy to get these houses listed. It's not easy to get people to step forward always. We have very few commercial properties, for instance, listed. We don't have a lot of the more modest properties listed, probably because of the cost of, of doing that. And as some of those older properties turn over, particularly some of the older craftsmen in central Glendale and south Glendale, because they're in areas that are zoned multifamily, there's a tremendous financial incentive for people to demolish those properties, as we see all the time, and put up something much larger, sometimes an apartment building. So this is really supposed to just offset that a little bit by giving them a tax break, you know, when those properties do turn over. And unfortunately, I wish we could even do more because we see that with those, if you've got a small property, maybe a big lot, or you can cobble together three or four of these old buildings together in a multifamily area, people make such a windfall in selling those properties for demolition and redevelopment that even if we could find a way to give them more of an incentive, that's what it would take really to get a lot of these properties saved. So to me, I think that the question of how much we're recovering or losing is really secondary to the fact that we're doing this because we're trying to... secondary to the fact that we're doing this because we're trying to incentivize something that has a tremendous public benefit. So, as I said before, I'm very against raising this fee, I'm going to continue to advocate for it, I'm interested to hear the rest of the cards, but I just feel like we're kind of, we're losing, with the conversation of fee recovery, we're losing sight that this is something that we do subsidize, and we should just happily admit to subsidizing it, because it's for a public benefit.
Okay, if I, just, yeah, I mean, the reason I ask for, we have speakers, and I'm sure they're very eager, oh, one, just one? Okay, so, the reason I asked our city manager to respond is because I think, I utterly disagree with Councilmember Friedman about the issue of the fee is irrelevant, because our starting point, our basic concept upon which our fee recovery model is based, is that a city did a fee study, and we recover what it cost the city to provide a service, and that's how we do, that's how we measure everything, right? Our philosophy is, we provide a service, we recover that full fee, and that's how we pay the bills. That's how people, that's what everyone does with respect to every service that they're provided by the city. So, that's the starting point. I'm not saying it's the ending point, but that is the fundamental starting point of everything that we do in this city. And to the extent that indeed our fee, the measure of the fees that we charge, or the measure of the fee that it cost the city to provide this service is not right, it's utterly, of course it's relevant, because it violates that starting point, ab initio. So, before we get into sort of the philosophical issue of, you know, whether it's the public benefit, and of course, it's a public benefit, of course, and that's why the state and us as residents of that state, we encourage, we want this public benefit, and the way we encourage it, the measure of that public benefit is this almost 60% property tax break that those that are, that are subject to Mills Act are receiving. So, I mean, we're talking about something as if, well, you know, that's a public benefit, but they need to get something in return. Of course, of course, they're getting 60% break in their property value. So, we, you know, I'd love to hear the other speakers. I also want to hear some owners who are, I believe someone said that we have a couple of...
Our next speaker.
Yeah, I want to hear what it is that they have to do to continue being in compliance with the Mills Act and retain their status.
And before, it's Catherine Yurka is coming up next, but I just want to make a comment that you say the philosophy of the city is to recoup all of our, the service. I think the philosophy, another philosophy of our city is to preserve the integrity of our neighborhoods and the historic resources that we have. So, I think we're kind of in a yin and yang kind of play, or a, you know, a place where, you know, you're right, I'm right, and we're just going to, and everybody's right, so we'll just have to kind of maybe find a compromise. Our next speaker is Catherine Yurka.
Good evening, my name's Catherine Yurka, and I'm also here on behalf of the Glendale Historical Society. From all over the city, our members have flooded you with emails in opposition to the proposed increase for the Mills Act fee. The Mills Act offers owners of historic buildings a financial incentive to maintain the intangible value that communities associate with their historic resources. Only 67 single-family houses have entered into a Mills Act contract since 2002. Why so few, if it's such a great deal? Even with the property tax reduction, it's extremely expensive to restore and maintain buildings according to the highest preservation standards. In many cases, the reduction offsets but does not cover the costs, and one does not simply recover them down the road. Home value is determined by location and the value of comparable homes, which means similar size, bedrooms, baths, et cetera. Owners who spend $50,000 on a historically appropriate roof replacement, rather than $30,000 on something else, don't watch their property values rise commensurately. The same is true of windows, finishes, and all of the other changes that owners often need to make to qualify. Raising the fee to $7,000 makes it far more likely that only recent owners of multimillion-dollar mansions will pursue a Mills Act contract, and this would be a shame. In the last two years, five of the six single-family homes placed on the Mills Act last sold for $700,000 or less, including two that changed hands as recently as 2013. One benefit of extending Mills Act contracts to historic district contributors, such as the bungalows that make up the Cottage Grove District in Adams Hill, is that it opens the program to many more modest residences that don't rise to the level of the Glendale Register, but are still significant. None of the Cottage Grove houses is worth anything like a million dollars, and many of them haven't changed hands for years. It simply wouldn't be worth $7,000 to get a property tax reduction whose benefits it may take them years to see as they try to recoup that cost. Some properties on the Mills Act are worth a lot of money. For example, the Masonic Temple sold in December for $6.6 million. But even so, we don't think that there should be a means test for the Mills Act for any type of property, and I've heard that kind of discussed as a possibility. Would a means test be based on the last sales price or the building's current value? The lesson of the recent financial crisis is that home values are very fluid. Would a means test take into consideration what percentage of the building is actually owned by the owner, and how much to the bank, is owned by the bank, is someone who is three years into a 30-year mortgage with a 20% down payment really the owner of a million-dollar house? What about owners who are underwater on their mortgage? I ask you, please, think of the community value to this important program. All the Historic Preservation Commissioners spoke against it at the last meeting. It really would be just a nail in the Historic Preservation in Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. No, that's all the cards that we have, so I will open to discussion. So, just a quick question. Can anyone talk about what it is, what does it take for the homeowner to continue to be in compliance with the Mills Act in terms of expenses?
Catherine, you have a...
Yeah, I'd love to hear. By the way, thank you, Catherine, it was great, I loved your comments.
Thank you.
Very compelling.
So, our house was already on the Mills Act when we bought it, and one thing that I've heard the city would like to start doing is, they're supposed to do an inspection every five years, which is why I was sort of surprised to see that Long Beach has an annual inspection, that's too much. And if they'd been doing their five years inspections more recently, we might not have been socked with the tremendous amount of money we had to spend on our house before we moved in. There was just a ton of deferred maintenance. Our house is a mid-century modern, it's got a ton of exposed wood, there was a lot of wood rot issues that we had to deal with, we had a failing gutter, gutter system, we had, there was damage to the stucco, so water was getting in. I mean, just doing, when you repaint a historic house, you really want to do it, you don't want to sandblast the paint off, the preparation work in painting the exterior was something like $35,000 or $40,000. We will never get the money that we sunk into this back, because you expect a house to be in good condition when you buy it, but we just thought this house was special, we valued it for the history, and it's not, I think it's just hard to turn this equation simply into finances, because it really is about this kind of love of history and what these buildings mean to Glendale, and so, that's why, that's why we do it. And I can tell you, as someone who just started a historic district in Neodriera Drive, I mean, so I don't have a lot of money, but my partner does, so we might have been those kind of multimillionaires who had entered into the contract no matter what, but looking at my contributors across the street that have like terrible termite damage, that have warped windows, that bought, and they bought their houses in like 2000 or 1998, no way are they going to do this in order to maintain and restore those properties, it's just, they're not going to get enough benefit out of the property tax reduction if they have to pay $7,000. I'm sorry, I know that's beyond the scope of your...
No, no, that's fine, no, I appreciate the comment. But, so, how is their ordeal or your ordeal different from anyone who buys an older home that has rot and termite damage, and these are the types of things, structural problems that are problematic no matter what, you have to deal with it, you have to fix it, whether you're a Mills Act home or not?
Well, like I tried to, I mean, we have these extraordinarily quirky windows, I cannot begin to tell you how they work, they're completely bizarre, we can't tear them out and put in cheaper windows. Like, there are cheaper alternatives that are available to you, if you're not being held to the highest preservation standards. You know, people who, like the Storybook House that was approved last year, which the owners bought in 1993 for $340,000, no way would they have put it on the Mills Act without that. They put on a Storybook roof. There is like one person in the state of California that can do that kind of work, and I, and they don't even know where to find him anymore, so I don't know what's going to happen the next time they need it re-roofed. You know, if they didn't, weren't on the Mills Act, or if they didn't care about the historic value of their house and tried to recoup some of those costs, they would have replaced it with just kind of any old roof. I have a neighbor who replaces 100 wood shingles on his roof each year, because that's the maximum he's allowed. He can't replace all the wood, because it's not, it's a fire hazard. And it's just these people who sort of care about those kind of details and try to put the money and the time into doing them, I think that is different. There are special costs with how you treat a historic resource and how you treat something else.
Well, it sounds like it's a, not only is it more expensive, but it's ongoing, it never, does it ever stop?
It never stops. I mean, it's worth it, but sometimes it doesn't feel that way.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Catherine.
I can say a few words, if I may.
Sure.
I think Councilmember Friedman already expressed her views, and, listen, this, the preservation of our history and our historic homes is very important, very important, it's important to me. I live in a home that I think is historic, I mean, doesn't have designation, nor have we applied for a Mills Act, but it's a historic home, so, and I love it for that reason. We went through some restoration, we just purchased a home, and we kept, you know, all the, I mean, we went for the expensive option, the windows, wooden windows, we didn't, you know, didn't do the vinyl thing, because, again, it would change the historicity of the home, it would completely change the character. So, I have full appreciation of it, and again, you don't have to apply for a Mills Act to have respect for it, but in any case, it's important, and I do recognize that raising the value of, I'm sorry, raising the fee from, what is it, $1,300 to $7,000 is a bit of shock therapy, it's a lot. So, I'm willing to think of a lower amount, a much, much lower amount, maybe one that we can all agree on, just thinking maybe $3,500, and start, you know, maybe increasing the amount by $250 or $500 every year. That'll take 10 years or 20 years for it to get to the $7,000 point. I'm just throwing this out there. My colleagues may have better ideas.
All of them.
And I'm happy to, happy to hear them.
Thank you. Councilmember Garpetian?
Thank you.
Your thoughts, questions?
Yes. How many, how many registered homes do we have, or properties do we have in Glendale altogether? Okay? 170-something?
I have 113 Glendale registered properties, many of those are city-owned, and we have 70 Mills Act contracts.
70 Mills Act. Okay, look, I, we can, we can discuss this issue in different, different ways, you can look at it as a business, if you have 113, 70 Mills Act, 7,000 times $6,000 that you didn't, 70 times $6,000 that you didn't charge will be 420,000, then all the money you lose every year, $1,000 per property, it will be like a million dollars within the last few years. But I don't think that's, that's the way, I don't think any of us are looking at this issue, just the financials of it. I think historic preservation is a, is a passion, and it's a lifestyle. It's not, it's not just, I want to, I want to have a historic house. And many of the historic properties are not on the Mills Act either. So, we increased the opportunity of applying for Mills Act on historic properties to contributors, and the numbers are maybe two a year. We have six applications that we can process, designated four for historic properties, preferably, and then two for, for contributors. If you don't have enough applications for historic properties, then we can add to the, to the contributors. This money has to come from somewhere, I mean, the one that the city subsidizes, we increase the fees on other, other applications, like, I'm going to keep talking about this, because I think it's an important issue, the design review board applications, it's $5,000 each time, and my understanding is when you get return for redesign, you have to pay another $5,000. Get return for redesign, am I correct or am I wrong? You have to pay another $5,000 if you want to add a room to your house. It is a choice, Mills Act is a choice. It's a, it's somewhat a passionate, passionate decision, but it is a choice, it's hooked up to the financials, because you have to bring the quality of work to a higher standard I wrote these notes last night after I received my last email this morning, actually, at 1:45, so...
AM, AM, right?
AM, 1:45 AM this morning, and I wrote my notes after that, so if it's, they're not in a specific order, but, let me see where we are. I received a few emails from people who don't live in historic districts, but they have this understanding or this, they think that they can apply for Mills Act, just want to put it out there that if you're not in a historic district, you cannot apply for a Mills Act, because if you're not a historic property...
You can.
You can?
Of course.
Can you come, no, 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 if, if you're, okay, I want to ask this question, because...
As of your recent decision, longstanding, any Glendale registered property is eligible for the Mills Act, and now we also extend it to contributors in districts.
Okay, that's what I'm, if it's not, if it's not a Glendale registered, and it's not in a historic district, you cannot, as a contributor, you're not a contributor, we don't know if you're a contributor or not, if you're not in a historic district and you're a contributor, you cannot act, apply for Mills Act.
There are many properties that are eligible for the Glendale Register, and those are the ones that we receive applications from. Generally, they also apply for the Mills Act at the same time.
Okay, if they're not eligible for Glendale Register, basically, they're not historic property.
Right, if they're determined, if the Preservation Commission or council denies a Glendale Register application, then they're not eligible for the Mills Act.
Okay, so if you're outside, don't leave, please, because I want to make this very clear, because if you're outside the historic district and your property is not eligible for Glendale Register, you cannot apply for Mills Act.
Right.
That's, that's what I was...
You could apply, but we'd say no.
I understand, I understand, thank you. That's, that's what I was getting to, because some of these emails were from the properties that they were not eligible for historic registration, basically, to be registered on Glendale Register, but they were thinking of applying for Mills Act, so that's one thing that we need to make sure that people are...
I'm sorry, I'm confused now. Can we have Jay Pratt come back up and answer?
What's your question again?
He's just saying that if you're not eligible for the Mills Act, you're not eligible for the Mills Act, which is true.
If you're not eligible for the historic register, you can't apply for a Mills Act contract.
If you are not...
Have to be a historic resource.
Yes. No matter where it's located, this is what I don't understand.
If it's historic, no matter where it's located.
And you can't apply for a Mills Act.
Can. If you're in a district, you could be a contributor, not necessarily historic resource, but a contributor.
Right, that's, that's the thing, because if you're not in the district and you have, you are historic, you can ask, apply for a Mills Act, or receive Mills Act, but if you're not in the district, you cannot apply for it if your house is not historic.
Right.
But if you're in the district, you can, if you're a contributor.
Well, you wouldn't apply for a Mills Act if you knew your house wasn't, only historic.
Correct.
I understand, that's, that's what the email was a little bit, I just wanted to make sure that people know that, so, it's... Okay, I have, I have just, I think this is not a huge, huge issue, but I want to, I want to just give a few ideas, see if my council members, how do they feel about it. We kept talking about the properties that were purchased many years ago, and the value is not up there, and they would not, and that's the reason, they're not being registered, or they're not being preserved as they deserve. So, my, my thing is like this, up to $750,000, value, no increase, from $750 to a million, maybe a $2,000, from million to million four, $3,000, from million four and up, these are the properties that they have to be repurchased, or the title was transferred, so, at that time, that's why they're worth $1.4 million or higher, then maybe $3,500 or $4,000. But, up to $750,000, I don't think we need to increase it at all, from $750 to $1 million is $2,000, which is not a huge increase. From $750,000 to $1 million is $2,000, which is not a huge increase, this few hundred dollars, and so on and so forth. I think that would, that would cover everybody, that would cover the people who don't have the financial means, but they want to file for a Mills Act, or their properties are historic, and they're single-family, smaller houses in Adams Hills or South Glendale or MidGlendale, wherever in Glendale. And if they are eligible to receive the historic designation, so they can apply for that as well. I think that's, to me, that's a fair way to go. And look, it's, we're talking about this issue right now because we're in a budget study, and unfortunately, it fell on the same month, that's Historic Preservation Month, it was not done by design, so, but it's our budget time, so we wanted to, we had to discuss it. We're discussing every, every single item on our budget.
Councilmember Friedman?
Well, I have another suggestion. Why don't we go with the staff recommendation of $1,300, which is a $50 increase from the last fee? I just, this is just not a lot of money to the city, and there's such a huge benefit to the community. And trying to figure out what a house is worth, or when, what someone paid for it, when they paid for it, doesn't make much sense to me. I don't think we have any other sliding scales like that in the city. We don't do a sliding scale for DRB review. We don't do a sliding scale for what you're going to pay, if you're going to replace your staircase or plumbing fixture in your house. We just do a flat fee. And here, there is such a tremendous public benefit, and if someone's a multimillionaire and has a giant home, it's not going to make much difference to them, but it's certainly going to make a lot of difference to people who are trying to renovate a house that might need a lot of renovations, at the same time that they might, you don't know what they paid for it when. And, you know, at the other end, people are taking it upon themselves with a legal contract to maintain a home to the highest historic integrity. And as Catherine Yurka said, it's much more expensive to do those historic renovations than to go to Home Depot and buy something off the shelf and slap it in your window, which other people have much more of an option of doing with all sorts of different types of renovations that they have to do. So that's what people are taking on, and for this reduction in property tax, which by the way, does taper out over time, it's not forever. And if it's something that will encourage people to preserve historic homes, renovate them correctly, I think it's well worth the small amount of money, you know, considering the size of this budget, with only a couple of these properties coming in a year, I just don't see the need to do this. There's no demonstratable, there's no, there's no, no one's demonstrated a need. It's not like we have so many applications and the city's losing so much money because of spending so much staff time trying to process these applications. It's not the case. In fact, we have properties out there that we're losing because people aren't listing them, either because of benign neglect, or because of improper repairs and renovations, or because of just straight-out demolition, that if anything, we should be doing everything that we can to get more people to list historic properties on the historic register. And this runs counter to that. So, you know, I will continue to argue for us to not find a problem where there is none, not try to create a revenue stream where it's not necessary, and to keep this fee as low as we possibly can, and try to encourage more people to come forward and list their properties.
Question from staff.
Councilmember Garpetian?
We have 113 registered, but 70 have a Mills Act. What happened with the other 43?
City-owned.
They're all city-owned?
Many of those are city-owned. Some people choose not to apply for the Mills Act, for whatever reason. People who've owned a home for decades generally don't get a tax benefit, so they may choose not to do it.
Okay, so there are people out there that they choose to spend the money and renovate their homes and bring it up to the highest standard to be eligible for a historic designation, but they don't submit, or they won't ask for Mills Act or to get that tax benefit.
There are those people, but most everyone, most of our Glendale-registered nominations come in with a Mills Act application, the vast majority.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. For my comments, Councilmembers Sinani and I, I respect your thoughts, your philosophy. I feel that we have, Glendale has a reputation on preserving our resources, on restoration of our resources. We've gotten awards for that. I would hate for that to be kind of torn apart, or kind of have us lose respect in that sense. I want to remind my colleagues that we did extend this Mills Act to homeowners in the historic districts. We opened the doors for them, and now we're raising the fees, and it's almost like slamming the door. We took one huge step forward, and now if we raise these rate, this fee, we're taking steps backwards. And I would like to see our, this council move forward in every aspect. I feel the increase to $7,000 or $5,000 is discriminatory. I really feel that you're limiting this to the millionaires, and I think there, as was stated, there are bungalows and craftsmen all over our city, modest homes, where people are not millionaires, but they do have a passion for historic resources or in their home. And I want to be sure that this incentive remains with them and that they don't lose this incentive. And if, I fear that if we raise it, we will, we will do exactly that. As far as the tax credit, as was stated, this is not a quick fix. Whenever you choose to apply for the Mills Act and choose to do restoration on your home, it isn't inexpensive. It's very expensive. We're talking a $40,000 roof in one instance. That's going to take years for the homeowner to recoup that tax credit, so, or the restoration fee cost. So that, I think, in itself is an argument. I think that this is, I think it's discriminatory, I think it's counterintuitive. I would like to, I have another suggestion, and I looked at Pasadena, and they have two tiers. They have one fee or two fees. They have one fee for residents, and they have another fee for commercial and multifamily units. What I would like to suggest is perhaps we raise the residence fee 20%, and we raise the commercial and the multifamily rate to 3,000. Because I feel that those people, the property owners that own commercial buildings and multifamily units, and that they can afford the three, you know, a higher fee. And I feel that, you know, the residents, I think they deserve to have the opportunity to use the Mills Act to improve their homes that they love. And so that's my compromise with this situation. And I certainly would like some support from my colleagues if I can get it. Councilmember Sinani?
Councilmember Sinani.
Sorry.
So, let me, you know, I'm kind of troubled about this expression of discriminatory, discriminatory. I don't understand where the discrimination comes. It's discriminatory if a wealthy individual who owns a very large and expensive home ends up having to pay, you know, a fraction of the fee, a fraction of the cost that's associated with going through the Mills application. That's discriminatory to everyone else in the city. That's true discrimination. Also discriminatory is somehow using different criteria for deciding how much a resident of the city has to pay in fees, when you compare that everyone else has to pay the full fee for everything that they get served for in the city. So that's, this is how the city functions. It's also discriminatory when, what is it, 13% of the, let's say 60% tax cut would come to Glendale, right? Is that our...
13.7.
13.7%. So it's also discriminatory that 13.7% of that money would end up in Glendale to provide services, you know, to, for us, that would be money that we would use so that we could provide more services to the entire city of Glendale. And the entire city of Glendale is not getting that money, and why is it not getting that money? Because this is an important public benefit that we're trying to retain in the city, and therefore, we're giving the tax break. That's why. And that's, that's how people are being compensated for it. I do recognize that there may be homes, there may be many homes, I mean, I don't know, and homeowners who can't afford the $7,000 fee. I recognize that. And maybe they can't even afford the $1,300 fee. And in recognition of that, I do support Councilmember Garpetian's tiered structure. Councilmember Friedman said that we don't have scaling fees, we don't, we have flat fees. Indeed, and the flat fees, 99% of the time, are a full fee, the full rate, the full cost of providing the service. So here, we're not talking about that. Again, I think $3,500 is fair, but in recognition of the fact that there may be those individuals who genuinely would love to, you know, become part of the program and would love to get some help to retain the historic nature of their residences, in recognition of that, I'm happy to support a measure that is tiered and provides, yes, provides a break to those that can't afford it. How do we do that? I also recognize the problem that that posts because of the means test. Ms. Yurka said that, you know, how do you determine, how do you, how do you pass through the means test, or how do you set the means test? That's problematic. But perhaps, you know, Councilmember Garpetian's structure is correct in the fact that, you know, those homes that are bought a long time ago, doesn't make sense for them to get the Mills Act, because if they haven't reappraised, if they haven't gotten a loan in a long time, I guess, you know, they're going to get a tax break on a much smaller amount of money that matters, so.
Well, Mr. Councilmember Garpetian?
Okay, I think we are, we're going a little bit in the wrong direction. I mean, the discriminatory and wealthy people against poor people, I don't want to go to that route. People who spend $40,000, $50,000 on their roofs, their house is not a bungalow. The tiered program that I'm proposing, it will cover all the bungalows, all the homes, less than a million dollars. And most of the properties that are being filed for, they are less than a million dollars. The ones that are over a million, two million, three million, four, they are already reassessed. And these people, with all due respect, I know a few of them, they can afford paying a little bit more than everybody else. One flat fee does not work. That's what I've been talking about during this budget study, about our fee structure for design review and everything else. Because if you have a room addition, you pay the same $5,000. But if you have a 20-unit apartment building for design review, you pay $5,000. And that is wrong, to me. That's another discussion that we will have, because I want to bring that up later on in the year that we have more time. But I want to caution my colleagues as well. If you want apartment buildings and large commercial properties to, for the owners to come up and file or apply for the Mills Act and put them on the register, if you make it $3,000, it's $3,000 per unit. But if you have a 25-unit apartment building, that would be $75,000 only application fee. So they will not...
Our fee is not per unit. Their fee is per unit in Long Beach. Ours is not per unit, correct? Ours is flat fee.
Ours is flat fee. Okay, then I stand corrected, thank you. Again, I think the tiered program, it's a way to go. To just test drive it, next year, you can, you can adjust the numbers and bring it down. You're talking about two, two applications, two contributors in historic districts, which most of them are not small bungalows in South Glendale.
I'm sorry, can I just ask you a question? Are you saying a sliding fee based on what they paid for it originally, or what it's worth now?
No, no, no. No, no, no. This is not current value. This is, this is based on assessed value. And we don't assess it, they don't assess it. Assessed value is done by the county records office, by the assessor. So right now, if you check your title, it will tell you how much your house is worth, and that's why you pay your taxes, and that's why you get your tax benefit from. It's not that, you may have bought your house, or my house, 20 years ago, and it's worth, I paid $400,000 for it. It may worth $900,000 today, but I'll pay my taxes based on 400, and I will get the tax based on 400. So this is on appraised value. It's not based on current value.
Well, the only thing I see with that is the fact that it's making it more difficult for staff, more hours for staff, if I'm not, if I'm not... Can I ask Mr. Ochoa, do we charge a full fee, a full-service fee for every, for every fee that we, do we get full service?
Some things you subsidize.
No, do we?
You will subsidize, generally speaking, those fees that accrue to single-family homeowners, and you get full freight from those folks who are private companies, multifamily, things like that. So you have a tendency to subsidize services towards single-family owners.
Like what? What kind of services?
If you look at, for example...
Talking about planning.
Yeah, no, I'm looking at planning services now, planning and building safety.
Well, let me ask you this. When a house, a homeowner is using the Mills Act, Mr. Toad, do they have to go through planning and design review and all of that?
They go through a process...
They have to pay all of those fees as well?
No, I mean, they pay a portion of it, the $1,300 that would accrue. So for example, you know, the administrative exception for single-family projects, recommended fee was $780. The total cost to provide the service is $1,283. You know, so you do...
How many percent?
You know, so, yeah, I mean, that's what council has historically tried to do, but I think, but I've heard council members say, the previous years, this year, is that the Mills Act is a little bit unique from some of these, where if somebody's doing a single-family room addition, or they're doing a single-family home, as opposed to the benefit that is derived by way of the Mills Act. And as we started out this discussion, and Mr. Garpetian said this, well, I don't think there's necessarily a wrong answer. You guys are making policy now, which is kind of messy sometimes, but ultimately, you get to make that policy. Is this something that you believe that the public benefit is so valuable that the public should invest in? Or do you think the private benefit is substantial enough that the public ought not have to invest in it? That's the crux of this.
I think we're two to two on that.
Well, and to that end, and to the extent that, this is, this is only the hearing.
Right.
And you don't have a fifth vote. I hear Councilman Sinani saying 45% cost recovery by way of $3,500, possibly agreeing with Mr. Garpetian's sliding scale. And you answered a question, it's based on market, not on AV, or is it based on AV, not market value? Because that does have some...
Based on any, any, any measure that they apply for it. Do they apply, when they apply for Mills Act, how do they get their tax benefit from? It's from their assessed value.
Assessed value.
So that's, that's why this is...
Want to make sure.
I can, we can't go appraise every property. Assessed value is on the record...
And if you use, that's right, that's right.
It's very easy to do.
And so we'll look at the assessed value, and that value, as under Prop. 13, drags behind what market value may be, but you're making policy. You're saying, okay, that's what we're going to hook to. I hear Councilmember Friedman saying that original recommendation is where she wants to be, and then the mayor saying that there's a two-tier system, single-family, multifamily. We will bring you back all of these on the 14th, because I don't know unless you're going to get to consensus here and give us a direction of what to include on the 14th. I don't know, it doesn't sound like it, but...
Jay, a question quickly? You can lift your fingers up, and I'll say it. How many multifamily properties do we have on the register right now?
Three or four.
Went like this.
Three or four. Three or four.
Three or four. So, you know, I think this is a case where we probably have more properties that would be eligible for listing. They're not listing them. There's a real financial disincentive for property owners of commercial property, of multifamily properties, to list their property on the historic register. This is one where, you know, if you raise the fees, you'll probably get none.
I don't believe that at all. I really, I think what we're talking about here is very modest. I mean, I don't want to make it look like that we are monsters here, and we want to increase the fees so much that no one will come up and apply for Mills Act. What I said was up to a million dollars, very, very, very small increase. It's not much. It's like almost what you were indicating, Madam Mayor.
20%.
Almost 20%. And from there on, people who have the financial means, they have to pay for some of the benefits that they're getting. And if there is no private benefit, believe me, there won't be that many, that many applications filed. There is a private, and that's what the Mills Act was created, to create some private benefits, so the homeowners will get that benefit and, you know, take care of their properties. Otherwise, they just let it go. And I think the true preservation is, it will not care about the private benefit. They would do it anyways. would do it anyways. I've, I've been involved in restoration of almost thirty homes, thirty-two homes up in Northern California. Not only were contributors, not only were historic properties, but they were worthy enough, they were deserving of being preserved, and the homeowners spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to, to protect their homes. So I think we need to just look at this entire thing as, as one, within one lens, and, and be fair. And I think just a few hundred dollars increase up to a million-dollar home, it's, it's not, it's not discouraging people who have bungalows in, in South Glendale, or in Adams Hills, or mid-Glendale, or even North Glendale, to, to file for, for Mills Act. It's not discouraging them, because that fee is not being increased. And those are, those are properties that were purchased a long time ago, or they inherited it, or, or what have you, so...
Not to beat this to death, I mean, we sort of are beating it to death, and we may have to do it again next week, but...
On the fourteenth.
On the fourteenth. But some people will spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to renovate their house, you know, because they have hundreds of thousands of dollars. And other people will renovate their house only because they can get that Mills Act relief and get maybe four or five thousand dollars, because for them, that's money that they wouldn't have to put in their house otherwise. And so if we can get them to get listed and use that, get that money so that they can invest in these homes, you know, that's what we're talking about. And I just, I was sitting here, I was kind of thinking about my own house. Not that I have a house that's eligible for listing, or do I, Jay? I don't know. But, you know, I have kind of a neat mid-century house, and I don't think it's eligible for listing, but if it were, we bought it in two thousand, we pay about six thousand dollars a year and change in property tax. So for us to list our house, it wouldn't be a big windfall. Maybe we'd be getting back three thousand dollars a year. So if you start doing the math and say, well, it's gonna be seven thousand dollars for me to apply, and then I'll be getting three thousand dollars back, if I gets, if, if I even, if it even gets accepted, you're not talking huge windfalls for people. And then if it's listed, then I have to, the burden then of what I have to do to maintain that house gets raised so much, that instead of a repair that might cost me five thousand dollars, now you're talking about a repair that costs ten thousand, and you're saying, well, it costs, cost, it's not cost-effective then, it doesn't make financial sense to list it. You know, you're sort of, people start doing that, and if you don't have a lot of money, you'll start doing that math, so... And then at the end, and then when I go to sell it down the road, it's possible that maybe it sells for less money, because it's only a thirteen-hundred square-foot house. On an eighteen-thousand square-foot lot, there's that other equation, someone else will come in and say, just knock it down and put up a couple thousand square-foot house. So now they won't be able to do that, because it's been listed. So, you know, there's a lot of kind of things that go into...
Let me ask you a question on the same, same example that you brought. Let's say you want to file for a Mills Act, and the application fee is two thousand dollars, for example, instead of twelve hundred dollars. You're not going to do it because of that eight hundred dollars difference?
I don't know where the, I don't know where the...
Let's, let's be fair, you're not talking about...
For eight hundred dollars, I would do it, but I don't know where that threshold is we're talking. Someone, person's talking seven thousand, that's a whole different ballgame than thirteen hundred.
No, no, that's what I was saying. Up to a million dollars, if it goes up to two thousand dollars, it's like a few hundred dollars increase. Up to a million dollars assessed value, which falls under your house, and many homes that are in Glendale, will cover most of the, the Glendale that are thirteen, fourteen, fifteen-hundred square feet. And when you have, and I want to make a correction here, because I'm a, I'm a real tour, and I want to, just a, just a disclosure. When, when you have, when you have a tax break, if I want to sell my property that is registered on Mills Act, and I'm getting six, seven, eight thousand dollars a year break, my property value doesn't go down. My property value goes up, because the person who wants to buy it from me has eight thousand dollars less cost to, to keep that property. And it's not that every day you have to spend money on your property. You do it once, you do it right, you're good for five to eight years, ten years. So I just want to put that out there as well. There are so many private benefits that it's good to have, because we want people to take care of their historic properties, we want, we want to increase our, the stock of our historic homes. We are all on the same page, but I think we're saying the same thing in a different, different way, but I think our, our hearts are all in the same place, and we want, we want the best, but this is, on, on the other hand, it's like five percent of it is a business decision that we have to make, unfortunately. So it will cover your house and everybody else's house, that it's up to a million dollars assessed value. It's not current value, it's assessed value.
I just don't know why we're nickel-and-diming people. We're supposed to be trying to encourage them to list their houses. Why are we talking about whether it's gonna be five hundred dollars or a thousand? Let's just keep it at the staff-recommended fee. It's still higher than all of the other cities around us, for goodness sake. So I just, I don't know why, why we, why this fee we've picked to start trying to, to raise it up, and we haven't done it with so many of the other fees that we have on the books.
Why, why do you consider giving a sixty percent tax break nickel-and-diming? I don't understand. The state obviously wants to encourage residents preserving their historic homes, and therefore they've enacted this act, and is giving a huge tax benefit, and that's the encouragement. If the state wanted further encouragement, they would say, you know what, by the way, there's a statewide subsidy program, we're gonna subsidize every individual who applies for the Mills Act everywhere, and we're going to subsidize that application. And that would be the end of it. They're not doing that, because they're already providing a huge tax break. That's the encouragement. So let's, let's get that straight. There's a huge encouragement there, which is good, great, that's the responsible thing to do. Now, we're, all we're talking about is recouping a fraction of the application. I mean, we, last week, we were talking about full seven, seven thousand dollars, which is not even the hundred percent recovery of the cost associated with it. Now we're talking, you know, we went, I came down to thirty-five hundred dollars, we're still talking about, no, we need to encourage with nickel-and-diming. We're, I mean, by that same logic, we're nickel-and-diming our residents on every service that we provide, because it may be on, for one individual, maybe a nickel and dime, but at the end, it aggregates, and it's a lot of money, it's real money, it's, it's called the budget, it's called the general fund. So we have to be responsible. With, with any other fee, as with any other fee, we have to be responsible. So let's encourage those people who can't, those residents who can't afford it, or it's difficult for them, that they'd love to do it, a little break will give them that extra impetus to go ahead and, and apply for the Mills Act. Let's help them out. That's why I'm supporting Councilmember Garpetian's proposal. But to say, no, no, just nickel-and-diming, forget about it. I don't agree with that.
Well, Councilmember Garpetian, then we'll wrap this up.
City Manager, can you please tell me how many fee increases we have this year?
We'll show you right here.
On different, different items across the board?
Across the board, no changes to sixteen seventy-six, increases to two hundred and thirty-eight, and then CPI at three oh two.
Okay. So altogether, it's about five hundred and forty different items that we have fee increases. It's not that we picked this one, and we're trying to pick on this, this fee and increase it for no reason. This came up last year by Councilmember Najarian, we're discussing it. So it's nothing personal here, it's not that we had no fee increases on any other item. And I want to tell you and tell the public that our permit fees since two thousand and five and six, I don't have the number, but I can tell you, they went up a few hundred percent, I think. I may be wrong, but they went up at least two hundred percent. Our permit fees, that people on daily basis use, and on daily basis they have to pay to take care of their properties. They all went up, all of them. So it's not that we're, we're just, I don't want to just create this, this, paint this picture out there that we picked one fee and we want to pick on that fee. That's, that's not true at all. So we're discussing this issue. If you can bring the report back, I think that's my suggestion, with different ideas, no increase, my suggestions, Sir Sinania's suggestions, and let's have the fifth vote here and see what Mr. Najarian's...
Yeah, you may want to include the seven thousand dollar version also, because there's a fifth person there that's missing, whose idea was to increase it to seven thousand.
Right. So, so I think too, to wrap up, let's, let's get the report back to us next week on Mr. Garpetian, Councilmember Garpetian's sliding or tier...
Yes, on the fourteenth, yes?
Yes, I mean, on the fourteenth, yes, so that we can talk about that, and, yeah, because I think we're, we're not getting very far right now with two to two. So it is, as I said, it's a philosophical difference, and we'll, we'll decide the next time. Any other comments on the budget? Nope.
How about the billiard table? No, that's a joke. We're done with it.
We didn't even show that, because you guys got, you guys made policy last time, boom.
Did not get any cards on that one. So we're, this is a report, this is a report only. So the next item?
Madam Mayor, next item is oral communication, discussion is limited, time is not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City Manager, may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
I have two parts. Robert Buniatian, followed by Lorraine Mohill. Please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Robert Buniatian. I just wanted to touch upon about a topic of housing costs, which are rental costs and also general housing costs. What I've given you is some data to speak of the facts of the high rental costs and high housing costs. Essentially, what the first graph is showing is a regular supply-demand curve that's, you can find in any economics books. What it essentially says that if you hold supply constant and you increase demand, you essentially increase prices. So your D graph is essentially, your demand graph, going to the right is increasing demand, and as demand is going up, while supply stays the same, your prices will go up. And I mention this because this is essentially what's happening in Glendale. Your supply is essentially constant, you have an induced demand, and prices are going up in rent and also in housing costs. What else you can say, the bottom, what the bottom graph is essentially, is the age of housing stock. What we can see from the age of housing stock is that ninety-one percent of homes in Glendale are essentially nineteen eighty-nine or older, or about sixty-two percent of the housing stock was built before nineteen seventy. What this essentially says is that Glendale has essentially chopped off housing supply in, in Glendale. Essentially, you have an induced demand, but Glendale's essentially has stopped a supply of housing. What the conclusion is essentially, and EconOne wants to, student will tell you, is that you have an increasing rent. On the next page, what you can see is household income. The median income of household in two thousand and fourteen in Glendale is just around fifty thousand dollars. The household by, essentially what that means is with the increased rent and increased housing supply, the median person essentially in Glendale has a very hard time affording rent and also affording housing costs. And also, if you look at the distribution of income in Glendale and the percentages, with the specific developments that are going, especially in downtown Glendale, what this essentially says that the developments that are going in downtown Glendale now are essentially for the higher-income people. Essentially, any supply that you, that is encouraged in Glendale, it is towards the higher-income group of people. Also, from the Census Bureau, if you, if you notice on the average percentage of household, household income spent on housing, for owner-occupied from two thousand to two thousand and fourteen, California is fifty out of fifty states where, where it has gone up from essentially twenty-three percent to twenty-five percent of the owner-occupied, and for the rental, it's gone up from twenty-eight to thirty-six percent. Again, what has happened over time is that Glendale ends up being a very expensive place to live. But this is not only a, only a, either conservative or liberal or any kind of an issue. I would, I would read you a quotation from Paul Krugman, who's a Nobel-winning economist. He said in one of his articles, "Rising demand for urban living by the elite could be met largely by increasing supply. There is still room to build, even in New York, especially upward. Yet while there is something of a building boom in the city, it's a, it's a far smaller than the soaring prices warrant, mainly because land use restrictions are in the way." And I have also attached a, a document that goes over that essentially says that housing rent and housing essentially is going more expensive in California, especially in Glendale, is because of supply issues. That is the price. And I, and I say this, and I bring this in forward, because although, and again, I say this because we just spent about two hours talking about historical districts, that's one of the issues that restricts supply coming into, and to, to make housing a little affordable. What makes supply shortage? It's all the zoning laws, inclusionary laws, affordable housing laws, open space laws, and every, essentially major part of its zoning laws that restrict the supply. If you restrict the supply, if you induce demand, you get higher costs. Thank you.
Let's see, Lorraine Mohill?
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Lorraine Mohill. Glendale is using fear to hide greed. Over thirty-five years ago, we were warned that a fatal blow to services would occur if Proposition 13 was approved. Today, we are told that fire, police, and library services will be cut drastically. We are also led to believe the utility user's tax is seven dollars per month, but that is not true. The UUT is a variable tax, as this council increases the cost every time they raise your water and electric rates. Your utility costs have increased over thirty-two percent in the past four years. The truth is, the city loves your, your dollars, because they go to pay outrageous salaries and pensions. The City of Glendale has authorized at least fifty thousand dollars of your tax dollars to send that one-sided information mailer to two hundred thousand residents. In addition, the so-called nonprofit organization that our city approached has collected so far over one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars to defeat Measure N. Glendale Firefighters Association for a Better Government, three thousand dollars. Waste Management Gardena, California, five thousand dollars. Wilson, Maryland LLC Lemley Theaters, Beverly Hills, ten thousand dollars. A major Glendale developer, Los Angeles, forty thousand dollars. Mobilization Political Action Committee, Los Angeles, sixty thousand dollars. Ninety percent of these contributors live outside the city limits of Glendale and only do business here. With fifty thousand of Glendale taxpayers' money, approved by City Council, plus another one hundred and eighteen thousand from outside interests, be ready, folks, for more campaign mailers and TV ads from the elite establishment. They want to protect their own. I would hope the smart Armenian-American community is not being fooled by Councilmembers Sinanian and Garpetian, plus City Treasurer Rafi Manukian, as they appear on Armenian commercial television stations twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. These politicians are not being honest with you, and are using scare tactics to have you vote no on Measure N. They take advantage of you not appearing knowledgeable and being uninformed on an important issue that affects you and your children. Rather than remaining neutral, these politicians are using their position to have you vote no on Measure N. City Treasurer Rafi Manukian is only looking out for his best interests. In these harsh economic times, we have many struggling Glendale families, including the Armenian-American community. At the same time, Mr. Manukian's annual salary is one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, plus a retirement pension of which you and I could only dream. Glendale Coalition for Better Government, a nonprofit, nonpartisan group of citizen soldiers, is taking on the elite establishment, fighting for taxpayers against wasteful city spending. Current and previous Glendale city employees, plus county, state, federal employees and educators, are joining forces to say yes on Measure N. They know the present system is unsustainable and unfunded, and will be the downfall of our jewel city. Greed. Seven hundred and fifty-six city employees earn from one hundred thousand to three hundred thousand annually, and will have lifetime yearly pensions of equal magnitude. A full-time City of Glendale employee earns annually a whopping eighty-three percent more than a full-time City of Glendale resident. Today, Glendale children are saddled with one point six billion of bond debt their elders have bestowed upon them. Our efforts will be pointless... Our efforts will be pointless if our children will have to pay for the continued bloated pensions and benefits for city employees. The present system is broken and unsustainable. All citizens need to get involved and stop this madness of unsustainable greed, or the next generation will look to us as the generation that had the opportunity to make a change, but failed to get involved. Don't be misled. Vote yes on Measure N. This door hanger is being placed on all Glendale residents' doors. They say vote no on Measure N. The door hanger is being paid by Glendale Fire and Police Associations. This is a conflict of interest. Don't be misled. Vote yes on Measure N. Thank you.
Mr. Garpetyan?
Your microphone.
For her. Can I ask you a quick question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Certainly.
I know, I know. Can you tell me one more time the organizations that encouraging people to say yes on Measure N?
Yes, I have this paid for by the...
No, no, no. The ones that you read from your notes.
Oh, the ones that I read with the Glendale Firefighters Association?
No, no, no. The ones that encourage people to say yes on Measure N.
To say yes on Measure N?
Said there's some county...
Oh, you're talking about Glendale Coalition for Better Government?
Yes.
Yes.
And on top of that, you said there are some other organizations, like some county organizations, that encourage people to say yes on Measure N?
No, the Glendale Coalition for Better Government, and then what I said was, current and previous Glendale city employees, plus county, state, federal employees, and educators are joining forces to say yes.
County, state, and federal educators?
Mm-hmm.
So they're individuals, they're not an organization?
Most of them are individuals, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
In addition to, I believe Pasadena T-PAC is also the outside organization that's sponsoring, so there's that. Just by way of clarification, there's $1.6 billion in bond debt. According to Mrs. Mohill, that's not the case at all. There's $1.6 billion in pension liability, for which you have $1.2 billion worth of liquid assets for that. And as we continue to pay PERS over the coming generation, the indebtedness goes away. But it's not even true indebtedness. The city has bonded indebtedness and GWP to the tune of $261 million for water and electric bonds. And you heard tonight, we have $38 million on the police facility across the street. That is it. Our ratios for bond coverage and for really liquidity in general are really quite impressive compared to any other city in Los Angeles County.
One more question. Do commercial properties pay UUT as well?
Yes, sir, they do. So the other thing, I think, that was maybe Mrs. Mohill misunderstood, is that when we say it's an average of $7 per capita, not $7 per household, so when you do the math, just take that portion of 17.5, divide it by the population of Glendale, divide that by 12, it is $7 per person per household. So we've been saying it's about all-in $30 per month. But to your point, sir, yes, it's even actually lower than that, because the UUT is paid by industrial, commercial, and retail customers, as well as residential customers.
All these high-rise buildings, all the shopping centers...
The Galleria, the Americana.
They all pay their share of UUT.
At least their share, sir.
Thank you.
That brings up, so how do you calculate their UUT share? Because that can be per capita, right?
It wouldn't be. You're right. And so we can tell you that, I believe, 2/3 of the electric portion comes from non-residential customers, about 1/3 of the water comes from non-residential customers. But because we don't control the billing on the gas company, I couldn't tell you definitively or on telecom. So that's why we just err to be conservative, so people wouldn't say we're sandbagging, and used the $7. I will tell you that the city has used, has spent $50,000 that was budgeted for public application, but everything that the no-on-end committee, just as the folks on yes-on-end committee are doing, are entirely of themselves, not of the City of Glendale, so...
And no tax-free money is being used absolutely on the no side, right?
I can tell you that with great confidence.
That statement was made.
Yes, that's just wrong.
I just can't resist saying that when I've gone to some of the meetings where people, where we've had forums about Measure N, the yes and the no, the yes on Measure N side, their argument is that we're spending money in the wrong places. Either they don't like the programs that we're spending money on, or they think that we're spending too much on salaries and pensions. Well, we did the budget today. We've been doing the budget for a couple of weeks, and we haven't had one of these people come up during the budget process and say, hey, instead of spending the money there, why don't you spend it over there? Which I find really incredible, because that's really the way, if you don't like how the money's being spent, this is the time to come forward during the budget and give your opinion about what you would rather see, rather than just saying, I don't like the way you're spending the money, so I'm going to take the money away and leave it to us to kind of guess what they think the money should be spent on. Or if they don't like salaries, what do they think the salaries should be, and what are they basing it on? This is the time to do that, is during the budget. So they have two more weeks to look at the budget now and come back when we have our actual night, budget night, to adopt the budget, where we can, you know, hear that kind of testimony. But I would just suggest that that's the right way to make changes in the budget, not just saying, I don't like the way you spend money, so I don't want to give you any more money. Thanks.
Move to adjourn?
Well, move to adjourn. No move. Second.
Thank you.
Your adjourn.